This packet, is that yours?
Uh, this is mine. All on the right, everybody's on the right side, supposedly. Dang, it's cold up here. It is cold up here. Geez Louise people. Okay, I now open the regular, is this microphone on? Is it? Okay. Now open the regular City Council Meeting of Lubbock, Texas City Council for December 3rd, 2024. The City Council will now recess into Executive Session in accordance with the Texas Government Code 551.071 to consult with and seek advice of the city's Legal Council, 551.072, to discuss the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property, and 551.074 to discuss personnel matters, 551.086 to discuss competitive matters of Lubbock Power and Light, and 551.087 regarding economic development. The City Council is recessing at 12:05 PM. We will be back at, um, 1 o'clock, is that correct? 1 o'clock. Uh, we've now come back from our Executive Session. Uh, we are now reconvening an open session at 1:34 PM. We'll conduct a work session. I now call on the City Manager Jared Atkinson to give us a presentation on the 2024 Bond, Road Bond Implementation Program or Plan.
Thank you Mayor, City Council, and probably much to your relief, we're going to ask our now officially new City Engineer, Mr. John Turpin, to walk us through the implementation plan. John?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. How are y'all doing today? See if I can get this thing. Right there? Okay, there we go. Oh, they switched to the P. There we go. So, Mayor, Council, I wanted to give y'all a quick update, next steps on our bond, uh, program, where we go from here, as well as the prioritization of the projects and the schedule. Good? Okay. Um, so with that, that is not... Sorry about this. That is not my presentation. Get the correct one. There we go. My apologies. So the map that y'all can see in front of you, uh, basically what you can glean off of this is where our projects are. We've got Broadway, 34th Street, uh, from Upland to Alcoa. I won't, I won't spend too much time here, but you can see that, uh, the stars represent basically our schools. So this is truly, it was represented as, this is truly a school bond, and it really does affect routes all throughout our city that lead to schools. So with that, I want to give y'all a little bit of overview of, uh, each project. As you recall, we had our Citizens Advisory Committee that chose these projects, and then y'all approved those to go forward to our voters, and then our voters were very gracious to allow us to move forward with construction. On Broadway, Avenue Q to Avenue E, um, this is a true rebuild project from curb to curb. What went through on our bond was, uh, basically a design that showed we're gonna have brick-paver intersections, and all of our straighter ways are gonna be concrete. And then we're gonna have a very nice-looking exterior behind curb. So we'll have trees, et cetera, uh, and we'll bring those forward as we make decisions and show y'all more. On University, 50th Street to Loop 289, this is a true rebuild project. This is gonna be done by our Public Works Department, our Street Maintenance Department. So they're gonna completely mill up and relay all the asphalt. All the concrete medians will be redone, uh, for the, uh, anything that's dilapidated, and they'll address any base issues or base failures throughout that project. Avenue P, 130 to 146 is a collector road. Uh, we're gonna build three lanes. Today, this is a strip paved road, um, that lies up against, uh, residential on both sides. Upland 98 to 114th Street, this is the one kind of outlier project in all of these. It's the only project here that is a five-lane road. This was originally an MPO-funded road. We are now gonna fund it, uh, through our bonds, which actually will be very good for us because it should, in the long run, because we're not having to run through text dot, that will actually save money on this project. For 146th Street, University to Avenue P, today that is a, if y'all have not been out there, you should go see it. Uh, it is a dirt road, and it's in bad shape. This project will really need to be done. This will build out, uh, three lanes. 146, Slide, Slide to Quaker, similar, uh, dirt road, and it's gonna be three lanes. And then finally, 34th Street, Upland to Alcoa. This is a strip paved road today, um, that will be ultimately a, uh, three-lane road. And in every one of these cases, I didn't talk about this earlier, um, these will be ultimate build-outs. So, meaning it will be built to ultimate grade, and then in the future, if we want to ever come back and add lanes, we will be able to do so. So, talk a little bit about the project costs. Y'all can see each one of these, I'm not gonna call them out, but really one of the, the things that I want to point out to you is that today, the, the plan is to let out the, basically 93.4 million, and not go to the 103 million unless we truly need it. So there's an inflationary cost in there, just because we've seen large price cost increase over the years. So there is a $10 million inflation there. So, just to point that out. Next steps for our, our bond project is a, a budget amendment, which we, y'all, y'all will see the first read today. And then on the 10th, you'll see your second read. There will be a reimbursement resolution on the 10th as well, to go after we do our second read of the budget amendment. And then we'll go through and create all of our capital projects. So today, actually, I think it was yesterday, I got an email. We should have something out this week to pre-qualify new firms. We already have some pre-qualified firms, but we've had people reach out to us, more engineering firms that have interest in doing these roads. And so we want to let as many of them in and, and get it, the best qualified firms that we could possibly get for these projects. So we should have that out on the streets and, uh, be able to bring that back to y'all. I'm hoping in January to February timeframe, uh, with all scope and fee for each project. And one of the ones that we've actually gotten, we've, we've already started is, uh, the Broadway project. So I had my scope and fee meeting today on that project. So some of the, the parts and pieces of these projects is, is design, right-of-way acquisition, utility relocations, and construction. I'm gonna spend just a little bit of time on this. So this is a, what a Gantt chart that basically lays out. Uh, I took a couple of days to, to put this together and really look at, you know, what is it gonna take to do this project? And so Broadway Avenue Q to Avenue E, it's a, a little bit more difficult project. It's gonna take a little more time, so I have a 15-month design time on there. In addition, there are some of our, uh, existing utilities that are old, that need to be updated, that are underneath the paving. And so the plan is to let that all to go to construction under one contractor. This will not look anything like our 19th Street project. We will have it fully controlled. We've actually already talked about phasing and how we could make this, uh, accomplished better, and I can bring that up to y'all later, at a later date. But, um, so each one of these parts and pieces, you can see in the legend, um, Engineering Design and Survey, and then the yellow is right-of-way and utility relocation. So I really want to highlight that because in many of these cas, cases, you'll see where our green is overlapped with our yellow. Okay? So you have to get approximately to a 30% design to start talking with utility companies, and then a 60% design to really tell them, hey, you're in conflict, we need you to move. So the problem being that, once you have done this, you have to acquire your right-of-way in order for utilities to move. So when you're looking at the timelines, until you get the right-of-way, your utilities are kind of stuck where they are. Even if they have their plans ready to go, it, that's why you have this extended period of time on a roadway project to actually get to construction. Because you don't want to have your contractor out there while they're moving utilities. So I'll move to the next slide, but, so here's basically, uh, the design and right-of-way acquisition. I'm front-loading as many of these projects as I possibly can at the beginning of the, the bond, mostly because it'll give us more time to get right-of-way and utilities done. So if I can get as much of this design done up front and have as much time as I can towards getting to construction, that'll help. So to, the two that I would say, uh, are gonna be tight construction-wise are gonna be probably Avenue P and Broadway, uh, for those timelines. Not because Broadway has right-of-way, but we don't know yet what utility conflicts we might find. I'm hoping there will be none. But Avenue P, I already know there will be conflicts with this, and it is our first two true construction projects, uh, that are gonna have to be designed. As I said, University Avenue from 50th Street to Loop 289, that'll be going this fiscal year 2025. And that's done by our Streets Department. We don't anticipate any issues there. The rest of these, I'll, I'll have let out. So I will highlight Upland Avenue, uh, from 98th Street to 114th Street. I do want to make sure and update those plans. They've been sitting on the shelf for quite a while. The plans are already done. Y'all may have noticed on my previous, uh, schedule that I have this project set out a few years. There's a reason for that, and that's because in October, we'll get our money for 82nd to 98th Street for Upland. So my intention is that, once we finish that project, we'll jump right into this project for construction. So we'll finish 66 to 82nd, and we'll just continue our way south. So, uh, I, I don't want to point out the rest of these, but, uh, we can go continue on. So the, the one out-year project, uh, that I have identified is 34th Street from Upland Al, Avenue to Alcoa. Really, that's just so that we can ensure that we have enough engineers. I can get one engineer off of one of our old bond projects and put them on this. So I think it's, it's a well-laid-out schedule. And then in 2026, we'll begin our Broadway Avenue from Q to E and Avenue P as well. That will be probably 2026, it'll be, uh, summer of 2026 by the time we get there. As I said, this is a longer lead time. Avenue P, similar, just because I want to make sure that I have enough time to move those utilities. So, uh, construction and, to begin in 2027 is gonna be our Upland Avenue from 98th to 114th Street. As I said, gonna try to lay it out to where we finish one project, jump into the next. And then 146th Street from University Avenue to Avenue P would be in that same year. And then in 2028, we would do the 146th Street from Slide to Quaker, and then finally 34th Street, uh, from Upland Avenue to Alcoa. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions? All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we'll move on to item 2.2. I'm gonna now call on our City Manager to give us an update from Lubbock Animal Services.
Thank you Mayor, Council. Mr. Stephen Green is your Director of Lubbock Animal Services. He's gonna give you the presentation today. Stephen, before you start, if you don't mind, would you introduce Taylor and Dr. Machado, please?
Uh, yes, sir. This is Taylor, um, Ruggles. She's the Assistant Director. She's been with the department about a year and a half. And Dr. Machado?
Hi.
She has been with us since 2018. Uh, she has two contracts. She actually does medical rounds every day, and then spays and neuters two days a week.
Glad to be here. Yeah, just like where you.
Sorry about that. So, um, this is just a list of our operations, um, all of our positions. From myself on down, we have 31 full-time employees and three part-time, and then our contracted vet. And this is just some of the things we do in the shelter on a daily basis. You can see it's quite an extensive list. Definitely keeps our non-shelter officers busy. These are just some of the highlights of the things we do. Obviously, adoptions is a huge part of it. Our assistant vouchers are for low-income families. We do have just our regular vouchers that we give out, and those are, uh, pay less money to the vets, but they are open to the public. And then, of course, we do a lot of, um, microchip events throughout the year. And here's a, kind of a list of things our field operations do. They're kind of the heart and soul. They're the ones that the public sees when they have an emergency, they're calling to come out. Uh, we do have officers on duty from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM every day. And then we have a officer on call every night for emergency only, from, uh, 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM. And some of the things they assist with is agency assist. This past weekend, we actually picked up about 10 dogs from people that had been arrested, and LPD had us come out and get them. We also do our fencing program, where we try to help citizens, uh, with minor repairs to keep their dogs at home. And then, of course, we are starting a program to, uh, spay and neuter problem dogs. Those can be dogs that have continually gotten out and caused issues, or had multiple, uh, litters of puppies. And here's a list of the citation fees. They did go up, um, fiscal year or two years ago. We issue the citations, they are collected by municipal court. And as you can see, some of those are, are pretty high, but we're always willing to try to get those raised. And this is kind of a list of what Taylor and I do every day. Uh, we deal with the dangerous dog affidavits. I'm the local rabies control authority, so I oversee all the bite investigations. Uh, Taylor takes care of the warrants. We do the disposition hearings on cruelty cases, um, as well, as well as helping Dr. Machado on, uh, medical rounds. This is a chart of our intakes from fiscal year 17, 18 through last year. And you can see the owner surrenders have, uh, went down. The total intakes have actually went down some, and our field service calls have continued upward. And these are the cruelty and, uh, aggressive investigations. As you can see, the aggressives have continually went up, so we're really focused on getting those types of animals out of neighborhoods and out of, um, harm, public's harms way. And these are our euthanasia numbers that we put out publicly. Um, we have started putting down more animals for behavioral or, uh, uh, failure to, failure to thrive issues. That's something that we think we need to probably find a, a good common ground of, of the euthanasia numbers versus the intakes. And these are our spays and neuters we have done in-house. Uh, those numbers have dropped somewhat, but Dr. Machado feels that that's good. If you're spaying less dogs in-house, it's probably because there's less dogs in the community that still need to be spayed or neutered. And so we have this year in a, this fiscal year, we started looking at bites differently. Under the state law, we have to report any bite or scratch that makes a human bleed. So what we did is we changed those to categories that kind of identify how severe the bites are, or what's, you know, if there's a scratch compared to a bite. So we have kind of defined those for you. And so with those new metrics, you can see in October, we had one severe dog bite. Seven scratches. Where in the past, those would all have just been listed as a bite. And in November, we had two severe cases, um, four scratches. And minor and moderate are pretty fair, they're 33 each, so they're running together. So one of the questions we had recently was how many animals are coming in that are spayed and neutered prior to arriving with us? And as you can see, in November, 32 dogs came in sterilized. 344 were not fixed at the time they came into our care. And these numbers don't count surrendered for adoption, bike quarantine, or agency assist. These are strict, um, just dogs that were roaming, and somebody picked them up. In the shelter, we had 74 that came in by appointment, and field operations picked up 218 running at large. And our goals is, uh, obviously to decrease the number of dogs and cats that can reproduce. We want to try to get those litters off the streets. We want to get as many spayed and neutered as possible. And some of the ways we do that is, uh, we want to get animals adopted, vaccinated, sterilized. So we do free spay and neuter voucher giveaways. Um, we have, like I said earlier, the assistant vouchers. We have mandatory sterilization after the second impoundment. And then our fencing program and, uh, spay and neuter in problem dogs. And some of the challenge we face is Lubbock is growing in population and area both. So we're challenged with departmental growth. We always have a challenge getting vehicles and equipment. We are having a new vehicle arrive within the next two weeks. In a minute, we're gonna talk, uh, Dr. Machado's gonna talk about capacity for care. Um, we do have phone call issues. We have hired two new CSRs this budget cycle to kind of alleviate that. Obviously, irresponsible pet owners is gonna be a large part of this discussion. Uh, we have dilapidated fencing intact animals, and those animals usually are not vaccinated. And then, obviously, roaming animals are a huge problem here in our city. So we do have difficult hiring. I think a lot of department, departments are running into that currently. And we have a large turnover, um, rate. I think nationwide, Animal Services do have a large turnover. That's something we've encountered. And then supplies for staff such as trucks, radios, catch poles. A lot of times, that supply chain gets behind. Dogs are really hard on your equipment. It dilapidates very quickly. Uh, we can always use more tablets and computers. Dr. Machado, you wanna talk about?
Hi, thanks for having me here. Yeah, so I guess the, my background is, yeah, I joined with LAS in 2018, close to the time when Stephen also became the Director. Um, we've, we've really changed a lot, uh, at the shelter. But one of our main concerns as a shelter director, manager, veterinarian, really relies, you know, on what amount of animals are in the care of the facility in the building, and can we care for that number of animals? It's difficult working with animals, right? Because I think they pull at everybody's heartstrings in different ways. The public has, uh, always has a say, right? About, um, their issues and problems and dilemmas with animals. And then us in-house in the shelter also face, um, some, some issues. And a lot of that has to do with how many animals are in the facility at once. So, uh, we pretty much always run at a level of overcapacity, um, and that's just the nature of the beast. Right now, all throughout the nation, a lot of shelters, uh, majority of shelters, especially open-admission shelters like our own, are inundated with animals that are stray as well as surrenders. So I like to look at my population health, and, uh, capacity for care is a huge part of that. So capacity for care is sort of a tagline, if you will, that sort of gets at the topic of what is too many animals to, uh, you know, in relation to the folks that are caring for those animals. We want to be able to maintain the, um, freedoms of an animal. We want that animal to be generally comfortable. We want them to be free of pain and discomfort. Uh, we want them to have adequate healthcare, um, and we want them to be able to display behaviors that are natural to their species. So, um, that being said, you know, there's lots of ways you can sort of look at that and sort of quantify that. And there's lots of different ways people do across this industry. Uh, the way we look at it at our shelter is, um, can we get these dogs and cats? And now, really, in this description today, I'm really talking mostly about dogs. Cats, we don't tend to have too big of a overpopulation issue, luckily. But dogs, we definitely do. So, um, the facility is, uh, you know, we walk through every day in assessing the animals in both physical health and, um, mental health during medical rounds. So we're looking at, do the animals have those freedoms for their species? Um, of course, we can care for them if they're sick, if they're painful. Those are easy things that I can do. Um, some of the more complex things is dealing with, um, emotional levels of stress, anxiety, fear, um, in these animals. And, uh, population health, when it, you know, when you're taxed with over, overpopulation, a lot of the physical health stuff can go downhill as well. So, um, uh, Stephen put together some numbers here. On average, every day, LAS has 21 animals brought in, nine animals adopted, two animals fostered. Again, that's average. Sometimes that can, of course, fluctuate up or down. But yeah, we currently hold between 350 and 400 animals in the shelter, and those by far and away are mostly dogs. Mostly large mixed-breed dogs. The facility itself probably has half of that number of adequate enclosures. And so we are doubling, tripling, and quadrupling our enclosures often. We want to reduce disease spread, we want to have a healthy population. So as those numbers push and push and push and grow, um, we, the general population, the health tends to be some of the first things we see. A couple summers ago, we unfortunately had our first distemper outbreak. That is a highly transmissible and deadly virus amongst dogs that we do vaccinate against. But it did, uh, get into the population, and when you have these numbers that are just tipping the scale, you're gonna have things like endemic disease, pandemic-type diseases happening. Yeah, so when you have more and more and more dogs, you have more, um, stress on staff, more stress on, stress on equipment. I mean, even just more dogs equals more fecal matter, right? And so we have humans cleaning this fecal matter every day. So you can imagine, uh, some of these workplace issues can become, uh, a topic of, uh, concern for keeping staff around and keeping good well-being for the staff. And then animal well-being, we don't want animals to be, um, in enclosures that are, uh, that we can't keep clean for them every day. So kennel space, and then public perception of that, right? So we have opened doors, which we love. We love being able to have citizens walk through our hallways and enter whichever room, basically, that they want to. There were times when I know the shelter was a bit more closed off to what animals were visible to the public, but we are glad that we can open all of our doors, um, to, to these folks. But walking through and seeing a lot of fecal matter, hearing a lot of barking, um, it's abrasive to the human senses. So, um, so those are all, you know, kind of classically possibly obvious reasons why keeping population in the shelter down is really imperative for us. So yeah, we assess these animals on a, um, sort of medical, uh, content or case-by-case, medical rounds every day at the shelter. And we take into account, um, you know, is this animal displaying any signs of mental distress or anxiety? Can we alleviate that? But it's a, it's a constant struggle, and so, um, just from the, the medical side point, it, it's definitely something that, that weighs on me heavily. Um, I don't love that we have to, uh, pair up or triple up dogs in enclosures that were built for one. Um, we often have dogs that stay with us, um, you know, six, seven, eight, nine months too, so this is their life. And, and we do, we work, you know, hard to get these animals adopted, but with the, the number of animals being brought in, um, in respect to the animals leaving the building, it's, the numbers just don't math very well in our direction.
So we do have a lot of opportunities for improvement. Some of those would be to keep increasing our spay and neuters, both in-house and with veterinarian partners. Uh, we do kind of have a five-year plan that we kind of look, we want to work toward. That would be getting a full-time vet tech. Right now, we have a part-time vet tech. And whenever Dr. Machado is doing surgeries, we're having to pull one of our staff to assist her in her vet tech. So that would be a, a really big item for us. We could use a second dispatcher for, um, not just during the week, but for weekends also. Uh, we always can use more animal control officers, both in the shelter and in the field. And at some point, an adoption event coordinator would really benefit us, because again, we're having to pull staff to do that. having to pull staff to do that. Our building was opened in 2011. That doesn't seem like very long ago, but animals are really hard on, on facilities. And we have a lot of infrastructure we need to take care of. I know TJ and I, TJ and I have talked and we're going to have to do some HVAC. It's just a mandatory thing. We're going to have to do this budget cycle. We do want to keep changing our internal metrics and getting what we think the council wants and what the public needs to know. And we want to get better at tracking our phone calls, obviously. We take in over five thousand phone calls a month. And so we need to have a way to track those better. This year, going to the bites versus scratches and dogs versus cats versus miscellaneous animals on intake, I think will help. Always before, it was just a generic, how many live animals came in. We definitely want to continue our public outreach, community engagement, education, videos. If you've been at City Hall, you've seen Taylor's face on the video screens. We want to continue that. Our transports have fallen off the last couple of years, but that's kind of nationwide. So we really want to go proactive on that and get that program back up and running. And we always can use more grants. We're going to be more proactive in trying to find funds, not just from council. Some of the suggestions we've had and have had from others is to increase the liability insurance for owning dangerous dogs. Currently, the city of Lubbock, that's two hundred and fifty thousand. In Midland, that's a million dollars. And they're basically saying, you're not going to have a dangerous dog in our city. We have spoken with Rep. Tepper and has worked with him on changing some of the state legislation. One of the things I'd like to see is mandatory vaccines and microchipping. That's something we already do at LAS, but I'd like to see that statewide. Obviously, increasing the fee on the citations would be a, a factor on citizens that aren't being responsible. And then spay and neuter, some of the things we want to look at is maybe having an ordinance change to spay or neuter bite animals that come in or possibly neuter on first impound. And so we hear a lot about dangerous dogs. A dangerous dog is an animal that's been declared dangerous because it made an unrestrained, unprovoked attack that caused bodily harm or injury to a human or another animal. And we'd like to see maybe creating a dangerous dog registry where you know if there's a dangerous dog in your neighborhood. We would also like to go away from me being the hearing officer and come up with a three-person panel to hear those cases and make the judgment. We are enhancing spot checks on dangerous dogs in the city. And as previous mentioned, we would like to look at the insurance requirements. We'll take any questions.
Mr. Gashin, or Mr. Harris first.
Good afternoon, everyone. And personally, I've lost two friends to dog attacks. I'm over District Two. I don't see any dog catchers in my district. Is that a shortage of staff? Yes, no?
I think it would be a shortage of staff and it would be a shortage of, we run priority-based. And so if there's two or three priorities going on, whether, whatever district it's in, they're going to respond to those first. But it definitely is a shortage of staffing.
Okay, so we need to decide to get you more staff because there's an abundance of stray dogs.
Yes, sir.
I mean, four or five to a pack. And I'm seeing them on a daily basis. And I know somebody has reported them, but if I see these dogs for an entire week running around in a pack and nothing has been responded to it, that's too long. That's putting people's lives in danger. And like I say, I've lost two people. The latest one was Jack Looney. Known him over twenty years. I have a suggestion that, I'm a dog owner. I love my dog just like a family. If you love your dog, microchip it. And I think I'll pass it around here on the council and see if we can get that as a requirement. And y'all sitting there saying y'all have three dogs to a cage, what is the time limit on euthanizing a dog? Because I feel like if you give a hoot about your dog, you would have it microchipped so it could get back home. And if you don't give a hoot about your dog, then who is supposed to? We're not supposed to. And we should not be overpopulated about a unwanted dog.
Yeah, sure.
So what's the, what's the length on the euthanizing?
Yeah, this is a very, obviously, classic question, right? It's a very heated question. Whenever you talk about euthanasia, you get swarms of people very much against it, no matter if the owner cares about that dog or not. So this is a, there is no timeframe at LAS where like you reach day three hundred and you get euthanized. We try to get as many positive outcomes, live outcomes, as we possibly can. A lot of our transparency and, you know, is for the public, right? They want to know how many dogs we euthanize. And the, it seems that often the loudest people in the communities are ones that are highly against euthanasia, period.
Oh, so I need to get a little bit louder? Is that what you're saying?
It's a, it is a topic that we just deal with daily. It's, it's in front of us physically, people coming into the facility. It's people on social media. So it's a really heated topic. And, you know, someone has to euthanize these dogs, right? So you also have to care for the staff that are the ones that are slated to euthanize the animals. You know, back in the day, the shelter did euthanize many, many, many animals per day. A human is doing that. And that's, that's actually emotionally damaging, it can be. Even for folks who say, I'm not affected by it, psychologically, it turns out they are. So there's a lot going on with that question. But no, we do not have a number of days that that animal has at our facility. And for the most part, that's what the public is sort of cheering us on about, is that we are not a quote-unquote "high kill" shelter or "kill" shelter. We, we try to keep these animals alive and fed and in good standards of care because that's, you know, that's what the public has taxed us with. And also because it's a life. And if we can get the animal adopted out, we'd, we'd prefer that over having to euthanize the animal for no other reason.
Yeah, but you did them with overcrowding as well.
Yeah, and it's, that's, so that's the catch-22, right? That's the double-edged sword that we live on.
And so that's probably some of the reason, too, why there's a whole lot of stray dogs out there. They're not picking them up because you don't have a place to put them.
Yeah, so yeah, imagine that, right? Being faced with both of those needs in the community. And both sides are, are very strong and adamant about them being the most right. So it's a challenge. Again, Stephen said we do run priority calls if the animal is, is gonna, you know, acting aggressively or in the middle of traffic or a public health concern. Those are definitely our priority calls. If a dog is aimlessly running around the neighborhood, eating scraps out of dumpsters and not bothering anybody, that's not a priority call. And that's how we run them right now.
Well, it kind of all depends on where you live, too.
Sure.
No one wants to see that in their community.
Oh, yeah. It's kind of an eyesore to begin with, yeah.
So what are you saying that you need? You need more space? You need more employees to get rid of all these stray dogs?
Well, "get rid of" is the exact questionable turn of phrase.
Well, get rid of them for you to lock them up, for them not to be visible in communities.
Yeah, it's just a, it's, it's a bit loaded and has multi-tiered effects.
I mean, like I say, I love my dog. My dog is like one of my chi, chi, children.
We're starting to, you know...
You know, but I am a responsible dog owner, which is chipped and spayed and everything else and kept aware of. But when you got stray dogs out there...
Yeah, and it's going to take time.
Do you love every balm you meet on the street?
It's going to take time, for sure.
Do you?
Oh, definitely not.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it'll take time. And we're very much at ground zero. So LAS has only started spaying and neutering in-house in 2019. I also work for Pets Clinic of Lubbock. As of January, we'll have twenty thousand spays and neuters done. And we opened in twenty, in 2020. So we're at ground zero and we're, we're chipping away at it. But it's not an overnight change. I'm very in touch with some of the folks in Wichita Falls that had similar issues. And it took close to fifteen years for them to see a difference on the street level after starting very large spay-neuter programs. So it's not going to happen overnight. Putting these dogs in the shelter is, is not really going to make a change right away. And so we're chipping away at some of that, the ground level, ground zero level stuff. And we'll, we'll get there. I really do believe we'll get there.
Thank you. Mr. Gashin.
Mr. Green, thank you and your staff for being here today.
Thank you.
You know, you and I have met previously and discussed many of the things that we're going to talk about in today's work session. But I organized this work session because, as I've told you before, I'm not satisfied with the current performance of the department. And the goal today is not to gripe at you, but to talk to you about what our expectations are, what our goals are, the end state that we want to achieve, and also to listen to you about what resources you need to, to accomplish that, that goal that we set out for you. And so first of all, I'll say I'm very encouraged to see some of the changes that you've briefed us on already from our earlier conversations about data collection, for example, that'll help us inform the policy decisions here. But I want to go through and talk about some of the specific issues and opportunities that I want to emphasize over, over what I've seen presented.
Yes, sir.
And so first of all, I'll say that the biggest concern that I have is stray and loose dogs. It's a public safety issue and it's affecting every part of the city. There's not any one particular district that I think is, is free from this problem. And dog bites from stray and loose dogs are unacceptable. And our goal, similar to crime, should be to get that number as low as possible. Ultimately, I think we've got to reduce the number of stray and loose dogs to help reduce the, the number of bites from, from stray and loose dogs. And so I'll share with you some of these opportunities that I see, and this is kind of my perspective on it, but I also want to empower you to know that we're going to be relying on, on your expertise and experience to, to accomplish these outcomes. So number one, I think the department needs to be more responsive to calls. And I'm, I commend you that you, you talked about tracking your performance on that, but I think it would be, I want to emphasize, be very helpful for you to track the number of calls that you're receiving, how many you're answering, and how long it's taking you to return missed calls.
Yes, sir.
And I'm hoping that the additional customer service representatives in this budget cycle will, will help you towards that. And of course, if you need additional resources, that should be a part of a continuing conversation. And also want to commend you on the data collection that you've implemented already. I think that's going to be very helpful for us to be able to track the severity and types of bites. One thing that I've saw in the historical data is that the number of intakes and captures is down, both the live captures and the owner surrenders.
Yes, sir.
And I would, I would think that that's a bit problematic because even as the city is growing, I would expect that number to go up rather than down. And so I'm, I would like to see more captures, especially the live captures, because I think anecdotally, a large part of the public safety perception is that there are too many dogs going loose for too long without being captured. Let's talk about owner surrenders. Can you explain what an owner surrender is?
Yes, sir. That would be if you have a dog and you no longer want to take possession of it, and so you want to bring it to me and leave it at my facility.
And what does a person need to do to set an appointment for an owner surrender?
They just call and speak to a customer service rep and have an appointment set.
How many appointments do you set aside each day as opportunities for owner surrenders?
I believe we do two owner surrenders a day.
We do one, sorry.
Go ahead.
We do one a day.
What's the current waiting period to get an appointment for an owner surrender?
Probably, I'd say you're looking to about July.
So at this point, we're looking at eight months or so?
For an owner surrender, yes, sir.
Yeah.
But for a stray appointment, you can get in sooner.
And, and see, that's an example of something that I'd consider a really serious problem because a person who doesn't want to be a pet owner is not going to wait eight months to surrender a pet. They're going to drive out to a county road where it dead ends, drop the dog off, and then that becomes a stray dog. And so this is an area that I would like to see much more responsive so that we are maximizing the opportunities for owner surrenders. Is not only is that going to be a better outcome for animals, it's also going to be a better public safety outcome. So I'd like to emphasize that as, as a priority for, for my policy goals.
Can I tie in there? I will say that, and I can get the research for you, but it actually, and maybe we can start keeping data on this, too, but delaying intake to a shelter often actually finds a positive income for, or positive outcome for that pet. And we'll find that often as well, where folks will say, I don't need my appointment anymore because it went to live with whoever or...
The county, the neighbor in the county.
I think it's a little bit more, it happens, sure, everywhere. But, you know, without data points, right? I do believe that a lot of times we, we actually will find positive outcomes for these animals by telling them that they have to wait and they can't just come in whenever they want to surrender their animal that they originally took ownership for and responsibility for.
Doctor, I appreciate that. I'd be happy to look at the data that you're suggesting, but from the policy, the goal of, or the, the flow of instructions is going to be from the council to the department. And so part of the conversation today is to set our expectations of what we want to see from the department. If you have data to suggest that we can find a better outcome to achieve our goals, I'm happy to consider it. But I'm telling you, from my perspective right now, it's unacceptable to have one appointment a day. It's unacceptable to wait eight months and then we're just trusting that the dogs have gone off to find a better home.
Sure. No, and I appreciate that for sure. I'm just here to give my little bit of medical expertise as well. And it has helped us incredibly on keeping our population a bit lower and not having multiple outbreaks of disease.
Well, we could keep the population lower just by not doing any, any work at all, but that wouldn't be an acceptable outcome either. Let's talk about shelter population right now. Mr. Green, what is, what is your current ideal capability for animals at the shelter?
If you're talking large dogs, ideally, I would like about two hundred and seventy-five. Three hundred is manageable. If it gets over four hundred, it's pretty hard to keep up with that.
And to me, the shelter number, the shelter population and the length of stay are two very concerning metrics because you're keeping dogs for too long. And I understand from our previous conversations that you'll keep a dog at the shelter until they are behaviorally unsuitable for remaining in the shelter. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. And sometimes that's a very short stay. I've seen dogs in a week's time that was already star-crazy. I've seen dogs that have been in there close to a year that have no behavioral issues.
I'd like to be an optimist about it, but I think that a dog who's been in the shelter for, you know, multiple months is unlikely to be adopted out. And it's a, going to be a priority to lower the shelter population because that will give us more opportunities for, for owner surrenders, for live captures. And so whether you need to do that by reducing the length of stay or reducing the total number of dogs in there, I think that's a very important metric to, to try to achieve greater efficiency on. And then the last thing I'll say on, on the operations is training and supervision of personnel is very important and we want to see the, the highest levels of, of training, professionalism. If you need additional resources to attract and retain talent, I would like that to be part of an ongoing conversation as well.
Yes, sir.
Now, a couple of the programs that you offered, and talked about vouchers, for example, can you explain how the, the pet service vouchers are funded?
Every voucher, every spay-neuter that we do, regardless of how it's done, is funded by a special revenue account. And that is through the sale of city license and rabies tags.
Are any of the voucher programs funded through general revenue funds?
No, sir.
What about the grant program that purchases materials for houses? What is the source of that funding?
For the fencing program?
Yes.
That's out of the general fund.
That's, can you elaborate on, on that program and how it works?
Yes, sir. We have people that just apply. A lot of those are going to be renters. And so they apply. We spend typically about eight hundred and fifty dollars for supplies and they have to do all the labor.
I've been critical of, of grant programs like this and...
Yes, sir.
It's up to the council to allocate funds for, for these types of programs. But my concern is that that's a policy that rewards people who have been irresponsible pet owners or irresponsible property owners. Somebody who's not taking the time and, and money to keep a fence or their, their house in a condition that's safe and acceptable for pets should not be rewarded with grant dollars. should not be rewarded with grant dollars from the city, especially because property owners who are being responsible pet owners, property owners who are upkeeping their properties, have to pay property taxes that in turn are being given as a gift to people with bad behavior. I think a policy that rewards bad behavior is not ever going to really fix the problem. And I say that really, those are comments directed to the council. Those are, that's for us to fix, but I don't support that particular program. Then tell me about the mandatory sterilization.
Currently, if an animal is picked up twice in a 12-month rolling period, it has to be spayed or neutered before it leaves or reclaimed by its owner. So we're looking to try to increase that, where we have more mandatory spay and neuters. Any animal that's adopted from a municipal shelter has to be altered when it leaves. The one big loophole we have right now is owner reclaims.
Is that a policy of the shelter, or what's the origin of the authority behind that policy?
It's in city ordinance.
What is the best, most effective way for people to report stray or loose dogs to animal services?
I always say if it's aggressive and an emergency, contact 911 or contact us by our dispatch phone. If it's non-emergency, it's easy to use our portal, the Click Fix, or our field operations email.
You know, Mr. Green, I've been critical. I've been told I also have kind of a grumpy face. And so I just want to say that I appreciate...
I have that, too.
I've heard it many times. But I want to end on a positive note, that I appreciate the work that you and your department are doing. And I'm really encouraged by the steps that y'all are taking this early on to improve your performance and the data collection and things like that. So we want to see it be successful. We want you to have the resources and the support that you need to be successful for this very important public safety mission.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Wilson.
Thank you guys for being here and for the presentation today. I think this is probably one of the hardest topics that we have to talk about, because it pulls on everybody's heartstrings. And Dr. Machado, thank you for being here. From a medical person to a medical person, you know, pediatrician's a lot like veterinary medicine, but not the same. I know how hard it is sometimes to wade off into politics and that part of it when you're trying to do a good job from the medical aspect. So thank you for that. So this may seem disjointed, because I've been writing a lot of notes from what Councilman Harris has said and Glashine. And so I kind of, I'm going to ask some random questions, so it may feel a little random. First, going back to the fencing program, Mr. Green, how much is allocated to that every year? How much was this last year? How much did we spend on that program?
Last fiscal year was $90,000.
Okay.
Was that...
Yeah.
$75,000 last year, and it's been increased to 90 this year.
To 90, okay. I too have concerns with that. I think some of the same that Councilwoman Glashine has is that we're rewarding bad behavior. And I think a lot of what, some of the recommendations that I have, and some of them may be a possibility, some maybe not. Some of them may be legal questions that we need to ask legal about. But some of the recommendations I have are going to be really harsh, and not harsh for you guys. But it's time for this council to become harsh on our citizens, on the expectations that we have for irresponsible pet owners, and harsh on, I think, the way we respond as a city and what we allow and how we allow bad behavior to continue. So I see the good-hearted nature behind this program as if we're trying to keep dogs out the street, if we just pay to keep them in. But is that our responsibility to do that? And is it the responsibility of responsible pet owners to continue to pay for irresponsible pet owners? So I have concerns with that program as well and from that aspect. And so some of the suggestions, and we met the other day, so some of these you've heard and Taylor's heard as well, that maybe we can look at from a legality standpoint and if can we do it, can we do it as council? And I think we should. And for one is the liability insurance. I think, I mean, you want to put a name or number on a tailor, if a million's enough for you, you put whatever number you think will help with the problem. And this is something her and I talked about the other day. If it needs to be a million, if it needs to be five million, I mean, if it will reduce the number of dangerous dogs in this city, that's the number we need to go to. So that's something I would like to look at, and the legalities of being able to do that. I also have some questions about intakes and appointments, and not so much about owner surrender, about strays. So one of the things that we talked about the other day when we met was the good-hearted nature of a lot of the people in this community. I'm probably one of those, is if you see a stray running, you know, we're on our HOA page going, "Oh, there's a black dog running here. There's this, you know, cute little fuzzy dog running on 96th Street. Does it belong to anybody? I'm going to pick it up," because that's what good people do, is we have that good heart. And we're thinking, "Let's get them off the street. Let's hope they don't get hit by cars. Maybe we can rescue a dog. Maybe we can return them back to their owner." And one of the complaints that we hear from council is these good people that actually are good responsible pet owners of their own animals are trying to help, but they get, they then call you guys and say, "I've got this dog. Can you either come get it, or can I bring it in?" And then they're being told, "Well, you have to have an appointment. You just hold on to that dog." Well, they're like, "I can't hold on to this dog. I have three of my own. I have small children, whatever the, you know, reason may be." Or they're saying, "Well, I tried. It's Saturday. We were out at a soccer game. I called, and they said, 'We can't bring him in today.'" And I think, Taylor, maybe you and I talked about this, and correct me, I know y'all, we're going to go back and look, but we don't do intake appointments on the weekends for strays. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So if I'm going to pick up a dog, and this is just personal, you know, hypothetical example, I'm driving to the hospital. I'm actually probably not going to stop when I'm driving to the hospital, because I have to be there for a shift, right? If I'm driving to a volleyball game for my daughter on Saturday, maybe I might be in where I can stop and help. But then I don't have anybody to help me as that citizen who just tried to help that animal and tried to help the community. So I think we need to look at intake appointments on the weekends. And we talked about staffing for that. I know it's a staffing issue for strays. I mean, I understand the thought process behind the owner surrender of maybe it will help them. I also understand Councilwoman Glashine's concern of, "Did they just go dump it in the county?" But I do definitely understand of, maybe they found a loving home for that dog. Maybe they changed their mind. Maybe it was a new puppy, and they thought, "Oh, my gosh, this dog's too much work." And then they grew a little bit, and they progressed in that, in their development, and then they held on to them. So I understand that. But more so for the strays is ones I think I have concerns about intake. I think intake should be available seven days a week. How we figure out staffing that, that may be a city manager and a council issue. That may be on our shoulders to handle that and to take care of that. It may be a budget, a revenue issue. But I think that really hinders good-hearted people trying to help you guys, because they're trying to work in coordination to get these strays off the street. And then they're being told, "Sorry, we're not coming out," or "We can't come out," or "Hang on to this dog." And so I think that's something that we need to look at, on how do we make that part of it better. We talked about this the other day in the meeting, and we were going to confirm this. The number of animals allowed per household, and I think we came up with it was, which I have always thought, living here my whole life, it was four, and it is actually not. It is eight. Is that correct, Mr. Green?
Yes, it is. You can have four adult dogs, four adult cats, in a litter of each under 16 weeks, but you can't mix and match that. It's four and four.
And to me, that's outrageous. If we are having irresponsible pet owners, they do not need to have eight animals in their house. So I think if that is something legally that we have control over as a council, I think that number needs to be reduced. I always thought, growing up here, it was four total, you know, mixed between dogs and cats at your discretion, but it was a total of four, and I think that's probably a more reasonable number. Owning eight without a permit, without running some type of shelter situation, is probably increasing the problem. And then having the additional litters, I understand that dogs have litters. People do breed and do breed responsibly. But eight animals just to have in a household seems a bit much, and that's something maybe we can do something about. The other thing that I think is citations, incitable events when your staff goes out, when we have field people go out. Numbers that I would like to see is how many citable calls LAS goes to and how many times those people were actually cited. Because one thing that I know that I have heard is that when people are cited for different things in our city, they're not paying citations, whether it's from our end, whether municipal court is not enforcing that, or we're just not handing out tickets. If we don't take a hard stance on this is unacceptable in our city, which is not 100% on you guys. I want to see your staff 100%. If it's a citable event, every single person, whether it's you show up at my house and I made a mistake, you better write me a ticket. That's what I think, you start making people have to pay more things out of their pocketbook, and maybe that might make a dent. Maybe it won't. And then on the other end, from the city's aspect, from municipal court, if we're letting people walk in, and it's a three, I saw 376, you know, whatever the fee is, and we go, "Well, you had a hard weekend. You're going to pay $10 today." What stops them from doing that again if nobody's paying their fee? So leading into fees is 376 a month. I know we talked about this the other day. Make it 1,000. Make it 1,500. Make it something that, it's actually going to hurt you or me, and not just you looking at you, Mr. Green, but us as in a, citizens in a city, make it worth your, make it worth their while that it's going to hurt their pocketbook if they can't follow the law. Because if we're not, I mean, and there's always going to be people out there. And any LPD officer in this city will know, it doesn't matter what you set the law at, people are going to break the law. But if we've got people that it might hurt, and it may even take 10 more dogs off the street because they had to pay a big fee or whatever the situation is, I think that is worth it. And so these are things that I think we can look at from a council standpoint to help you guys try to reduce the problem, because capacity's a problem, right? And I think if you, it doesn't matter how big you build it, you're going to fill it probably. And so I don't think just building it bigger is the answer, because that doesn't go to the root of the problem. And so if people are the problem, that's a lot of who we need to target. Let me think, was there any other things that I was looking at? I know that was a lot. But those are some of the things that I want to see. I'm sure there's many more. I'm going to let, there's a couple other people in council that would like to talk. And I would love to continue to sit and work with you guys in a collaborative effort, so we can make this the best that it can be, both from the animals' perspective and from a city perspective.
Absolutely, doctor.
Mr. Rose.
Thank you, guys. And coming from your perspective, I know you guys are involved with this because you love animals. And this is, it's such a frustrating and difficult situation. We're not here to, we didn't call you up here to beat on you. I know there is two sides of every story, and these things are, these things are hard. And my frustration, and I won't repeat everything that we've already said up here, but this is a people problem and not a dog problem. And in terms of, do you guys have the numbers on how many citations were issued last year?
I don't have that with me, but I can get it for you.
Okay. I would definitely like to know that. And I think to Dr. Wilson's point, I mean, I am 100% on board with raising these citations. I think you guys, if y'all could come together and look at something like that, what you think it would be reasonable. But we're not in a reasonable, you know, Mr. Glashine talked about a public health hazard. I mean, this is something that, this is something that is, one of the, my biggest worries is having people attacked by a stray dog. And, you know, we can talk about, you know, getting these dogs, getting these dogs in and off the street and everything like that. But the fact of the matter is, I mean, you're over capacity as it is. So we definitely need to look at, obviously, we need to look at staffing and everything like that. But I think citations and really coming down on people that are not being, do you have them?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, so we filed 1,096 citations with municipal court last year, and we filed 1,880 citations.
1,096?
Citations, yes, sir.
And then what was the other one?
1,880 citations.
Where that comes from is there might be multiple violations on one citation.
Okay.
Usually, it's most common, you're going to have to vaccinate, restrain, and license.
Yeah, so each citation can hold up to five violations.
And you guys cite those, and then it's kind of out of your court, for lack of a better word. Our municipal court is responsible for enforcing those?
We do have some that we would dismiss for certain things. That's going to be a very, very small number. The majority of them are dealt with by municipal court.
Okay. Okay. And then you talked about Midland having a $1 million dangerous dog insurance policy. What constitutes a dangerous dog?
It has to be, it has to have affidavit filed on it and go through a hearing. And it has to basically fit the stipulations of having been off its property, unrestrained, unprovoked, and caused bodily harm to a human, a domestic animal, or a fowl.
Okay. And that is, on that specific dog, does it, does it go to certain breeds?
No, sir. That's any dog.
That's just any dog that has caused bodily harm? Okay. And you guys said there are mostly large dogs in the, that you guys have in the shelter. Do you have any idea why? Is it just because smaller dogs are easy to keep care of?
They're easier to take care of. Usually, they're kind of cuter, so the owners are more apt to come reclaim them. They're cuter, so they're going to get adopted first. Large black dogs are hard to get adopted, for whatever reason.
Okay. Okay, well, we appreciate you guys coming down today.
Thank you.
Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you guys coming down and running the gauntlet with us today.
It's been our pleasure.
It's very important for us to gain an understanding of kind of what you do. And one of the things that I think we as a council almost always go back to is comparison to similar cities. And so I'm curious about the size of our shelter, the size of your staff, the budget that you have. How do we compare to similar cities?
We actually have data that we weren't able to put in a PowerPoint, but we do have some numbers on that.
You did the research. So we don't have shelter size?
Gregory Taylor did this research. I'm not taking credit for anyone else's work. So I don't have shelter size, but I do have full-time employees. We have 34...
31.
31 full-time employees. If you look at other shelters, the largest is going to be Amarillo at 45. And budget-wise, our budget this fiscal year was about 3.5 million. And if you look at like Abilene's budget, theirs was, I thought it's not right.
And that's not right.
But that's because it...
This is just their budgets.
Amarillo's is 4 million. Denton's is 3.5 million, pretty close to ours. And Plano's is 2,800,000. And we are ranked number three in budget out of these four cities.
Out of those four?
Yes, sir.
We're in third place? Okay. And again, just to compare, so that we have a frame of references, is my point. Do we have an adequate budget? Do we have an adequate facility to accomplish the things you want and need to accomplish? So you go back and ask the question, these smaller budgets, smaller facilities, are they kill shelters or are they no-kill shelters? And I would encourage you to come back with some of that kind of information to us so that we can make a judgment as to, you know, what we need to do going forward. You know, we would all like to say, "Well, if we throw an extra million dollars to you guys, all this is going to go away." And I don't think that's the case at all. And I don't think that we've, well, we've been through this. There's not an extra million tucked here under the dais to throw at you either. So we've got to find what your proposals are and what Dr., Mr. Glashine has started working with to find these solutions. And spay and neutering program, you said we're on the ground floor, and so we can expect great, better results in eight to 10 years, like some of the other communities. But what else do we need to provide for you in terms of tools to make you be able to do your better, a better job, to help you be able to do a better job? So that's my question. And while we've gotten a lot of conversation, I haven't heard that back. And that's what I guess I would be looking for, is at some point, you come and say, "We need this. You know, if we had this better, greater mousetrap, we could catch more mice for you in a better situation," so.
Yes, sir. And HR is currently working on a lot of those comparisons.
Okay. Well, so can we have, I can anticipate something coming back shortly with that information.
As soon as I know something.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor Potem.
Thank you, guys, for being here. And obviously, I've been in office for two and a half years now. One of my priorities, obviously, was meeting with animal services, trying to address... One of my priorities, obviously, was, um, meeting with animal services, trying to address this issue. And we have made a lot of progress. We focused on making sure that we're doing the spay and neutering. We have done some marketing because it's important that we are making the public aware, educating them about not only their part, but what we can do to help them to do their part. The other thing is that I've met with you guys to find out what are some of the problems that we're having. We heard all of the fluff and important stuff. Tell me what you think the problem is. What is the problem?
Um, a hundred percent, it's gonna be irresponsible pet owners. You have a lot of neighborhoods where, um, the animals are just roaming. They're not fixed. They're not vaccinated. That causes a lot of public issues, both in the animal kingdom and the human kingdom. And that really, we just have to keep getting those owners to be responsible, whether that's through more fines, whether that's through, uh, whatever means necessary, whatever tools we use, we need to get those owners to become more responsible.
That's the first thing. They're responsible pet owners. What would you say is the next big problem that we have here in the city of Lubbock?
We have a lot of overpopulation of animals. We have a lot of dilapidated fences. We have a lot of areas where there's vacant lots, and these dogs get very street smart. And even if we get called on them every day for a week, a lot of times, you just can't catch these animals. So, we have been looking at maybe net guns, other forms of catching a dog, other than just what we currently have. Um, so, I think having ways to catch those dogs, having the community in those areas help us catch those dogs would really be beneficial.
You mentioned overpopulation. Let's address that a little bit more. Tell me, how do you address or how do you fix overpopulation?
Spay and neuter.
And do you feel that we have provided the support to make that happen?
I think, I think we have. I think it always can increase. I think Dr. Machado would have a dream list of things she would like for her surgical suite and her team. Um, but yeah, I think, having come as far as we have in the short time we have, um, I think getting the spay and neuter going, getting it more out into the community also is, is gonna be very beneficial.
And you do offer a lot of spay and neutering opportunities for free. Um, you have vouchers. So, you're doing what you can. But again, it goes back to irresponsible pet owners. And then, um, tell me about the process of when you bring a dog in for the first time, and then I wanna know when you bring a dog in for a second time.
Well, every animal that comes in gets fully vaccinated, microchipped. Um, we do all of the medical issues on it. We, uh, treat for fleas and ticks. We, um, deworm. And so, that animal gets an intake and it's in our system. So, when it comes in the second time, if it's been a year, then it's gonna get whatever vaccination that needs to get current. Um, obviously, it's not gonna get re-microchipped or get a new intake number. And then, if it's been within twelve months, it has to get spayed or neutered before it goes home.
But twelve months. So, technically, that's like for a dog that has had two violations, they're repeat offenders, if you will, and so, they've been back twice, and then you have to wait twelve months before you get them spayed or neutered?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I step in?
Yes, ma'am.
There might be a little miscommunication here. Um, all of our animals leave spayed or neutered. The only times that animals go home not spayed or neutered is if they're reclaimed by their original owner within seventy-two hours. So, the majority of our animals are already leaving spayed and neutered. So, most of those animals we're picking up a year later are already fixed. The only ones that aren't are those that were reclaimed within that seventy-two hours or ten days if that animal was microchipped or otherwise had an identification on them.
Or by, by quarantines.
By quarantines that go home to their owners. Um, so, after that first impoundment, if they're impounded again within twelve months, then they need to get fixed.
Mm-hmm. I'm not gonna ask about the ordinance, but I know that, um, city attorney and I talked about an ordinance that we prepared with the city attorney's office, as well as on recommendation by your advisory committee. And, um, you know, we'll leave it at that. It is public information, I believe, right? For people to look at if they're interested in knowing about that?
Well, drafts that haven't, that haven't been actually acted on by the city council may not be.
Okay.
Um, but certainly, what is currently in our code ordinance is you can go online and look, um, for those things, but.
So, we're already doing a lot of these things. Some of the ways that we, or let's go back to the dog itself. I heard everybody talk about how they move in packs. What causes a dog to move in pack, in a pack? Do you know?
Well, a canine is a pack animal, right? So, their oldest ancestors would be the wolf, and they do tend to travel in groups. Helps them with, um, scarcity of, of food and resources to work as a group.
But would you also say, and maybe you guys can tell me if this is correct, dogs that are in heat, does that create, like, um, a pack?
Um, sort of. Dogs, females that are in heat, um, will be giving off certain odors that male intact dogs will seek out. Um, so, you will find situations where there are females in heat and multiple male dogs circled around her. So, in a sense, that becomes a pack. Um, but that is during a specific time of estrus for that female. Um, the female has not necessarily increased her roaming, but the males definitely have. So, I get a lot of owners, um, that sort of don't see the repercussion of having their male out all the time because they don't get the puppies. Um, but that female somewhere, um, is making babies.
Having their dog spayed or neutered or, you know?
Sure. Yeah, a lot of times, it's, I don't need the male neutered because, you know, um, it's not my problem, sort of a thing.
But if you neuter the dog, does that help to decrease that roaming?
Yes, ma'am. It will, almost one hundred percent, get rid of the urge for that male to jump its fence or dig under the fence to get out.
Mm-hmm. Speaking of fence, let's talk about the fence program.
Yes, ma'am.
That has been incredibly successful. Tell me about the fence program. What is the title? Explain it. Give it detail so that all of the, the council can understand and the public watching can understand the purpose of it.
So, we don't really have a specific name for it. We just call it the Fence, Fence Project. And it was something that, um, my field supervisor, Jessica Smith, came up with. She, her idea is to try to keep dogs at home and not roaming and not bringing them into the shelter. So, she started on a small scale, and she has a, clients will call her, and usually, it's people that don't have necessarily a problem dog. They just have issues with their dogs staying at home due to whatever issue. Usually, it's rental property and absentee landlords, and the renter may not have the financial means to do some small repairs. So, that's how it kinda got started. It's been very successful. Just this fiscal year, we've had twenty families helped with that program. Uh, they have to do all the labor, so it kinda gives them some skin in the game. And so, it has been very successful at keeping some of those dogs out of, out of the shelter and off the streets.
And we're not just handing money out, are we? We're, we're, we don't actually give them a check for them to go and purchase this stuff, right?
No, ma'am. We actually purchase the materials, and then they have to go pick it up and do the, the labor, the delivery and labor themselves.
Mm-hmm. And then, let's go back to employees. I know there was some questions for you. I think more response, or to be more responsive to calls. Currently, you lack the number of people to be able to answer phones. Is that correct?
Um, I think that's been helped with the new positions, but when you're taking in as many phone calls as we do a month, a day, a week, we can always use more bodies for that.
Have we considered maybe a phone service or, you know, I don't know what you call those, the, that answer phones of, what is that? What is that service called?
We, we kinda had that years ago with three-one-one. Um, and it just, they don't give good information sometimes. If you don't, if you're not kinda in the department, there's a lot of questions that people ask that you can't give a good answer to. So, I like it having in-house better, but I would love to have more people in-house to answer those phones and those questions.
And right now, you have two people that do all that work, right?
Well, we have five full-time CSRs, and we have one part-time office assistant. And those five CSRs, two are dedicated at all times, two answering phones. Um, obviously, if you have a lot of foot traffic, you're gonna have to deal with the in-person. Uh, so, they, at times, are on the phones. At times, they have to deal with live customers.
Mm-hmm. But it still go back, goes back, that is, to not enough employees.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, which, if we had more employees, which we're working on, that would help us to increase data collection significantly?
I think so. I think we would have a lot better data collection. I also think, if you're talking about field response, I have nine field officers, a lead officer, and a supervisor. They're running seven days a week. Somebody's on call every night. So, definitely, we could always use more field officers. The city gets annexed, annexes in property, gets a bigger population, more animals. And so, we definitely need more bodies out there running those calls.
And since, I mean, our population is just booming, have we kept up with that growth with field officers?
Uh, not enough. We have added one within the last few years, um, but I, I would love to have more.
So, we added one within a number of years?
I wanna say within maybe two fiscal cycles ago, and then a shelter officer last budget year, and then the two new CSRs this year.
Mm-hmm. And then, the other thing, um, on the intakes and captures, I noticed in your citations that, what's the top citation? If we pick up a dog and they want, I mean, just, I think it was, was it five-seventy-six, five hundred seventy-six dollars?
Uh, that's for failure to surrender a bite animal, I believe.
Okay. And just say an average citation. What, two-fifty? Two-seventy-six?
Three-seventy-six, I think.
I have been speaking with our state representative, Carl Tepper, who is working on some bills to see if we can increase or have a citation from the state, starting at about seven hundred fifty dollars. And, you know, so, I think that also addresses, and he wants to introduce small bills and kind of start addressing these issues because it's not just a city problem. It is a state problem. And part of it is because of irresponsible pet owners. So, that being said, talk about education. What are you doing as far as building awareness and getting the word out? Tell me about that.
Go ahead.
Um, we have been filming PSA's. City of Lubbock posts them to their social media. I believe they air on channel two. They play at the citizen, or they play outside in the lobby. Um, we do make as many informational posts on Facebook as we can. So, like, for the holidays, we have a, don't just buy a pet for the holidays for your children 'cause it's cute, you know? It ends up in our shelter in six months. Um, we also do a lot of stuff with the community. We go and talk to tons of different groups. We've done the Kwanis Club, the neighborhood.
We'll be with the mayor in the morning.
Yeah, we do coffee with the mayor. And so, we do go out and speak with the public as well. Also, when people come into our shelter, we try to give them as much information as we can. We have infographs available to them that can cover a wide array of topics that they might be struggling with, from how to trap a dog to rehoming a barn cat.
So, who does all of that? Is that your job?
Um, kind of, yeah. Um, I organize a lot of it. We work with Texas Tech a ton. Their students are amazing, and they do those infographs for us. And so, it's not just me doing all that work by myself.
But what is your title? Tell me what your title is.
I'm the assistant director.
So, as the director, you now are doing the marketing also?
Yes, ma'am.
You also do the social media?
Uh, me and Steven do it, yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am. And you're also doing the public awareness efforts?
Yes, ma'am. I do the PSAs.
And then, at, back at the shelter?
Uh-huh.
You're doing what?
Um, we do medical rounds five days a week. I'm in charge of dangerous dogs, um, budgets when that comes to the time of year, overseeing day-to-day operations on both, uh, shelter and fieldside bite investigations when necessary.
Answering phones.
Um, answering phones.
Helping with customer service.
Yeah, I go up to the front and help when they're slammed up there.
So, obviously, once again, we are also dealing with issues of employees or lack thereof. That's ultimately one of the problems that we're having at the animal shelter. This has been a constant issue. We don't have enough employees. We don't have enough field officers. We don't have enough customer service folks. We don't have folks to go and do all that job. So, part of the issue is that we need to increase that so that we can decrease the others. And then, the other thing, on the shelter population, what's the longest dog that's been sitting at the shelter?
I think we have a year.
Yeah.
I've seen that poor little dog.
Yeah, I mean, there's, uh, we got a bunch adopted recently, like, in the last cohort of year stayers, but right now, I think we have a couple.
We did just get our longest-stay dog out, and he was there almost three years.
And that's the dog I'm talking about?
Yeah, we took him to the radio.
Yay. Well, I'm glad to hear that. And then, the other thing is that, let's talk about employees again.
Okay.
How many field officers do we have that are on, um, that are out because of an injury? Do we have any?
I don't believe we have any out on light duty right now.
Right now? But it is a constant issue.
It's a very physically demanding job, so it is something people will get injured at frequently. Yes, ma'am.
And then, let's talk about retention. One of the issues with retention, it, you guys said it. I mean, um, Doctor, you mentioned that having to put dogs down constantly is emotional. It plays with your brain a little bit. And tell us a little bit more about that.
Well, I know, uh, a couple years ago, we had, um, some tech, Texas Tech folks come in and sort of assess that exact question, um, using, uh, questionnaires of sorts to sort of delve into the psyche, I suppose, of, of people. So, I don't have those numbers, um, in front of me, but it's a, it's a taxing, uh, emotional job to do. Um, and even the sort of toughest on the outside, uh, people will find, um, that it, it might affect them, um, long-term. Um, we have had some staff that, um, we've had to pull away from that job. Um, it seems to, you know, it can have multifaceted effects, uh, with, um, anger or emotional issues at work, also at home. So, uh, you know, I'm not a psychologist, but I know that, uh, it's definitely a, a deeply-rooted, um, thing to look out for, to sort of keep in mind.
And then, just in your field, we have a shortage of, of folks that do the type of work that you do, do we not?
Shelter medicine, uh, for sure. Um, and veterinary medicine in general, um, it sort of depends on who you ask. Uh, there's a lot of sort of unserviced areas of the country. Um, and again, that goes deeply into, well, what resources are there in those areas for a veterinarian who's graduating with a lot of debt, set up shop, and, you know, start working? So, again, a very sort of deep question. But it depends on where you are. Um, in rural Texas, it is a, an underserved area for veterinarians. Um, but again, uh, those areas, you have to think of, can they provide, um, a quality of life for a veterinarian? Uh, is the income gonna be there?
Well, I guess, you know, you've heard from everybody. And it comes back down to lack of employees, lack of resources. And I know we have an aging facility. It's still, you know, it was only, what, eleven years ago that it was built? But considering the size of animals, I think it comes back to irresponsible pet owners, uh, retaining, recruiting, constant public awareness, and the fact that you're doing more than one job. So, you know, if you felt today like we were attacking you, that's not what we're trying to do. I think there is definitely a very sincere interest to support you, and maybe from different perspectives. I do believe that some of our council members would do good to go visit your facility because it seems like it's just a fluffy, sweet little place, but, you know, you might call it a, a dog prison in some regards. Not that you guys are prison guards or anything, 'cause I know that you love these animals and that you advocate for them. But we definitely have some issues in the city, and part of what I've been trying to introduce is trying to address that. But we have some legal issues that I think we can't just do that. But it sounds like we're doing everything that we can. And as far as the fencing, I know, I just wanna address this one more time because we did increase the amount. We had a lot of support. we did increase the amount, we had a lot of support, I think even our former mayor had a, one of his own, um, pets was, their dog was attacked by a stray dog, and, um, and it had to do with fencing issues. So, fencing is a very important thing, and I know that it seems like we're just handing out grants to folks that are responsible, but I think when you put a fence, it's demonstrating that you're responsible enough to take the precautions to prevent dogs from getting out of your yard, or into your yard, because it goes both ways. So, it's a good program, and I think we need to give it a chance, and I hope we're not trying to cut that back too, because I think it would be a disservice to our city, and it would increase the number of issues that we have. So, you know, I applaud you guys for everything that you do, keep doing it. I know that you have been real, you know, troopers to do a lot of the work with, you know, you're multitasking, doing a lot of the work with such few people, and I can tell you that I will continue to advocate for you, I will continue to meet with you, because I do believe that you're doing everything that we can, but we need to make sure, we can probably address some issues, and I think we're definitely, now, you can tell we have the support from council, so definitely need to increase some customer service and field officers, and I think that we're on the right track. So, if you have any other needs that you didn't include on here, besides putting a, a human touch to all of this, what else do you think that, that you need? It's your last chance to ask, and then you weren't, you're not going to get another chance for a while, but, just kidding.
Well, you already touched on it, but, um, the, I, I know that a lot of large shelters that cities are our size or larger have, um, folks whose job it is to add, for to get animals out of the shelter, right? So, they're foster coordinators, they're adoption coordinators, because, yeah, we can be a glorified boarding facility for dogs and, you know, continue to give them shelter and feed and have them live there for a year. It'd be much better if they left, so we can make way for dogs from the public, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so I would be really interested in having, um, full-time people considered for those types of tasks, um, really outreach with the community, um, and getting positive live outcomes for animals. Um, we've, we started a transport program where we ship animals out of state, um, but, but trying to even more locally, um, get these animals fit with, with the families that will, that will do really well with them. I, I know that's a position that's very common in large animal shelters, and I think it would do really well at ours.
Wonderful. Taylor?
Um, I know I've suggested upping liability insurance for dogs that have been deemed dangerous in the city. I think having specialty people as well, like Ilah was saying, so, an intake officer. I know Dr. Wilson wants to go to intake seven days a week. We have only so many shelter officers, and they're doing playgroups, they're doing intakes, they have to do any owner requests that come in, they are doing any behavioral euthanasias that have to happen, they're cleaning, they're feeding and watering, they're bringing animals up to the front for adoptions, doggy day outs, so if you have someone that can just do intakes or something, it's going to help them.
Mm-hmm.
I'll make mine quick and easy. Um, we did a, kind of a study today of how many animals are owned in Texas, and the average Texan, uh, forty percent of Texans own dogs, and the average Texan has 1.7 dogs, and when you run that over Lubbock's population, we have over 181,000 owned animals. We need those animals spayed and neutered, so they're not making more unowned animals.
And microchipped?
And microchippeds.
But, I just want to say thank you once again, and then, I do want to correct something, you didn't say it, but I, a lot of times, people blame college students. You said something to me one time about college students actually being very responsible pet owners. Will you elaborate just a little bit, and then I will end it at that.
Uh, yes, ma'am. Our biggest foster base, our biggest volunteer base, the people that come and do the doggy day outs, the people that come and sit in a pen, take a dog out to the playyards, are ninety percent college students. They are a lot of times in a dorm, and they can't have an animal, their animal's at home in Dallas, Houston, San Antonio, so they do come out and they, they put the time and effort in. I know there's a stereotype that college students don't take care of their animals. I think the younger populations are more animal-friendly, you see that on bars and restaurants and stores, people are taking their dogs everywhere, so the, if we're, having younger people come up with better pet ethics, so to speak, it's going to benefit the community overall.
Not to mention, we have all these dog parks now.
Yes, ma'am.
That has been a big help, but I know that you've been asking for resources, you know, uh, paper towels, dog food, cat food, and that is a constant thing, but I appreciate what you guys do. I know it is not an easy job, and I know that you are, you know, you don't have enough employees, and, um, I hope that we can resolve that and make that something more possible for you and for our community, and I hope that the public will take this and become more responsible in owning pets. And also, the number that you were mentioning to, um, Mr. Glashine, is, uh, or the other app is MyLBK. So, if you don't have that app on your phone, please download it today.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Dr. Wilson?
Yeah, just a couple of random questions I wrote down, while everybody else was kind of speaking. How many, and this is just a guesstimate, how many dogs do you think strays that we have roaming the streets in Lubbock?
I, I don't know that I could come up with a good estimate. I would say, if you're talking about strictly stray dogs that have no home, nobody caring for them, living strictly on their own, it wouldn't be a large number. What we have are dogs that weren't, were once owned, for whatever reason, or puppies that were born and never taken care of, and those dogs are out there, but I, I couldn't give you a good number. I would like to try to figure out a way to come up with an idea on that. One of the slides did show just animals that were at large that came into the shelter, that's something we can start tracking too, but I really don't have a good answer for that.
Okay. I think that's a good data point, maybe we can start, I mean, it's hard to get, it's a guesstimate, right, but maybe something we can start looking at, so we can have that as a data point. Um, something else that you guys might know, you might not, also want to put this on Legals' radar, is, do any cities in the state or in the country require a permit for people who are backyard breeding? Require a permit for people who are backyard breeding? Like, to breed a litter of pups, that they make them have a permit from the city?
I know there is a statute, maybe in state law, where if you have over, I believe it's eight breeding females, you have to have the permits. Um, so, I'm not sure about just city ordinances or what have you.
Okay. I'd like to see if there's any, I mean, the legal options for things like, just in general, not?
I, I am aware of at least one other city that does do that.
Okay. So, something else, I mean, you know, when we talk about people breeding irresponsibly overpopulation, I mean, that's something else that maybe we can do. Um, another thing that I just wrote down briefly was, um, Councilwoman Martinez Garcia was talking about setting fees, that the state was looking at something. Am I confused? I thought that we set our own municipal fees within limits. So, is there a max state limit that we, that we are bound to?
Well, it, it, it depends, our current code ordinance, I mean, for violations, it's basically a class C misdemeanor, and that's basically set by statute as up to $500 unless it's a special type of violation. Some of the legislations that's been mentioned today presumably would raise that to $750, but we generally don't have the authority to find something above a class C misdemeanor as far as $500. There are some exceptions for dangerous dogs, if you're a pet offender or a dangerous dog, it has a special fine for a dangerous dog that does exceed that, but for the most part, the general rule is $500.
So, for all the fees, not a single one of our fees are at the max that are allowed by that state statute?
Yeah, I'm, I'm talking about the fines and penalties for fees for registration.
No, I'm, I'm talking about, sorry, fines, not fees, but fines, so I, I saw other, like, numbers that were like $376, $476, those are the ones I'm talking about.
There'll be court costs, that, some of that will be state imposed as far as what the court costs are, then some of it will also be our own, we might have some own, our of our own court costs, collection fees that we have, um, for all cit, municipal citations, and then as far as the actual fine itself, um, a lot of those numbers are going to be, well, our standard offer is this amount plus court costs, and so that's why you would see those numbers.
Gotcha.
That are in there. If it actually goes to trial, then you might see, then the prosecutor would ask for the maximum amount at that point in time.
Is, is there a way that we can pull and see, so they, they have the number of citations that they put out there that were actually paid, and what, what the amounts were paid at?
I certainly.
Compared to what, what the citation level is?
I certainly can find that out. Yeah, we'll ask that.
Thank you. Thank you guys so much, I appreciate it.
Mr. Rose?
I'm sorry, guys, we're getting long-winded here, but I have one more question. Um, how, what is the, so, uh, a dog, first offense, bites someone, it's reported, what is the, what is the process for that? Are they required to be surrendered, or how does that?
Uh, under city ordinance, an animal that bites or scratches and, and makes a human bleed has to be quarantined for 10 days to observe for rabies.
Okay.
The only thing we're checking for is just any sign of, uh, any sign of rabies. At the end of that 10-day period, the owner can come and reclaim their animal.
Okay. And, uh, that's where this citation comes in for failure to surrender bite animal?
Yes, sir. We use that as a tool on the front end a lot of times, to make sure they're going to get that animal into quarantine.
Right.
And then if they don't, we can issue that every day for the 10-day period.
Okay. Second offense, same dog?
I, it's still the same.
Still the same?
Yes, sir. There's no, no, two strikes, three strikes, and you're out.
Okay.
It's just with, if it was within 12 months, I would have to neuter or stay.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
I'll make this so brief, but in speaking with, um, our state representative, he did mention that if we, if they posed that at $750, if, once that gets into works, that the owner of the pet could remove that citation by, um, spay and neutering and doing all of those types of things. So, you know, again, it comes back to what we can do locally to prevent that, but it would be good to know that something like that is, you know, being mandated at the state level also, so. But, I'm so glad that we have had this converse, or this dialogue, because I think we all recognize that it is an issue of all of our citizens, all of our districts, and as you can see, we have the commitment to address the issue, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can I have a final statement too?
Sure.
What was like Jerry Springer's final thought, or something like that? Um, I, I think that, uh, what, a lot of what I'm, and I'm so glad I could come here and come, converse with y'all today, um, I think a lot of, also what a lot of this comes down to is like, field versus shelter. Um, shelter as an adoption center versus field shelter as a public health issue, um, and, and those lines sometimes blur and they conflict. Um, the way that sort of shelter medicine folks think about shelters these days, I've used this, um, analogy before, but it's like a funnel effect. Back in the day, shelters were a funnel of upside-down funnel of animals coming in, a ton of animals coming in, a regular funnel, and a very few of them coming out alive. Um, the paradigm has very much shifted as far as human-animal bond, human, humans sort of thought about owning pets anyways, over the last many decades has shifted, um, animal welfare concerns to, um, flipping that funnel upside-down, and the shelter focuses now on trying to bring in as few animals as possible and get as many adopted out. You can see how that would completely conflict with the needs of the community. So, I think that's where a lot of this stuff gets a little bit blurred, too. I know Stephen has always sort of brought up, you know, he wishes they were sort of two different entities, in a way, um, so that's just a conflict that we sort of live with day in and day out, and I think can cause some of these discussions to go around and around and around. Um, but that's just from my, my side of things, um, they're my population, and I want it to be as small as possible.
Well, again, I, I think you, um, I don't think we have any more questions for you, uh, but I think you understand how important an issue it is. We rarely take this much time to address an issue, but I think all of us have heard from our constituents about the problem. Some people will say, well, we really don't have that bad of a problem. I don't know statistically. I know the perception is there is a problem. I know when I see packs of dogs running, you know, loose, it concerns me, um, and I think it would concern, uh, anyone, especially parents who might have their kids outdoors, uh, concerned about that. So, it is an issue we have to address, and our responsibility, public safety responsibility, is for people. As much as we love our pets and our animals, our first responsibility is the safety of our people. Uh, the welfare of animals comes below that, and so we, we have to understand our priorities, and that may be, we, we have to make some difficult choices, but, uh, you've put your finger on it, there's a sort of a disconnect between, uh, we want to take more animals off the street, but we need to lower the population of our facility. We're overcrowded. I don't know how we meet those two goals without making some very tough decisions. Um, but, you know, we thank you for your work, uh, your responsiveness, your ability to answer our questions, which isn't always true, you know, from people, you know, uh, you've done a very good job of answering our questions today, so, uh, we appreciate you and thank you for taking your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, obviously, public speaking is not my forte, especially with the published, uh, very polished speakers, so I thank you all, and we will continue to do everything we can to keep improving.
Thank you. We're going to take a brief break here before we come back into our regular session, so it is 15 after 3:00. Let's take a 10-minute break, we'll be back at 3:25. The city council will now reconvene, um, in session, and we will move on to our ceremonial items. I'm going to now call on Pastor Michael White II with the Well of Life Fellowship International, uh, he will lead us in our invocation, and followed by Mayor, uh, Protem Christie Martinez Garcia, whose birthday it was yesterday. Happy birthday. Will lead us in our pledges to the United States and the Texas flags. Will you please stand?
I invite you to please bow your heads and close your eyes. Eternal God, our Father, we invoke your divine presence upon these civic proceedings. May your heavenly light shine upon our city and make her a beacon for municipalities around the globe. May our mayor, city council, city manager, city attorney and police chief ever put the best interest of the people of this great growing metropolis we call Lubbock above their own. And when we fail to agree, may we choose consensus over contentiousness, always seeking to preserve the pillars of civility, human dignity, and common decency. May your grace, peace, and love ever abide with us all. We humbly offer this prayer in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
And now let's put the unity and community and let us join together to do our pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the unique Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Pastor White, that was almost like sitting through a church service, wasn't it? It had him wait for your prayer here, but thank you for staying with us. I now call this meeting to order, and we will take up first, as we always do, citizen comments, according to our council rules, any citizen wishing to appear in person at a regular meeting can, uh, speak to anything on our agenda, but we have no one here today who is doing so, but we always remind people, you are always free to come, uh, sign up, uh, before we begin our meeting, and, uh, name the topic on our agenda you wish to speak to, and you're always free to speak, uh, to our council. So, uh, just want to always let people know that, but today, we have no one doing that, so, uh, we will move on to take up our consent agenda, um, and, uh, well, no, first of all, we've got to take up our, our minutes from our previous meeting, so item 5.1 is the minutes from the regular city council meeting of November 5th. Is there a motion, uh, to approve item 5.1? Is there a second? Second? All right. Any, uh, changes or alterations? If there are none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. I hear none, the motion carries unanimously. We'll now take up item 6, our consent agenda, um, and with no objection, I'm going to, uh, pull item 6.14 from the consent agenda, and we will vote on that separately at the end. Is there any objection to me doing so? I've seen that. I've seen none. So, the consent agenda is before you and I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, not including item 6.14. Is there a motion? All right. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I hear none. It passes unanimously. On that consent agenda, if you, there is an item on there, though, that involves, I believe, our veterans cemetery. Is that right? It's on the consent agenda.
That is correct, Mayor. And thank you. Council has approved the initiation of the contract for the city of Lubbock to help with the actual operations. Mayor, you do have two guests in your audience today?
Yes, we do. We want to recognize our guest today here in our audience and ask you guys to stand, if you would. We have Dr. John Kelly, who's the director of the Texas Veterans Land Board and the veteran cemeteries. Thank you for being here. Dr. Kelly, and we also have Noren Bender, who is also the overseeing the whole project out there, the, the local project. And if you haven't been out there to see the work that's being done on East 50th Street, right after you drop into the canyon on your way to Buffalo Lakes and come up on the other side, you'll see it off to the south there. It's coming along wonderfully and excited to see that. So, thank you guys for being here today and we're going to be thrilled to see that project when it's done. All right. Now, we're going to take up item 6.4 and at this point, Mr. Gashin, if you will recuse yourself. Item 6.4 is, 6.14, is a second reading, considering ordinance number 2024-0148, designating North Park Development Area as a tax increment reinvestment zone, establishing a board of directors, establishing an effective date and a tax increment fund for that district and providing all other things that we needed there, too. Do I have a motion to pass this ordinance on its second reading? Have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. I hear none. It is passed unanimously. All right. Thank you. Mr. Gashin, come join us again. Well, now I'll take up our regular agenda and we're going to start with item 7.1. I'm going to call on our city manager, Mr. Atkinson, to provide us a report on the final pricing results of the general obligation refunding bonds and the water and wastewater system revenue refunding bonds.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, we're going to ask Mr. Matt Bowles with RBC. Matt is our lead financial advisor, of course, gentleman that took you through the parameters ordinance that is this refunding. And I believe he's also going to give us an update on your recent reratings on the credit standing of the city. So, Mr. Bowles, if you, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson, Mr. Mayor, Council. Good afternoon. Good to see you all. As Mr. Atkins said, I am going to run through a quick final pricing results for two refunding obligations that you undertook pursuant to certain parameters that you established at a meeting here recently. And I also wanted to provide some information on your credit rating. So, I want to take a little time to do that today, but I'll work through this as quickly as possible. The first page here is just a, I don't see it.
There.
Magic.
Yes. Wait a minute.
Well, it's still not cast up on the screen. I take it you can see it on your monitor there? No. Okay. We're set. Here we go. Okay. So, two series of obligations that you wanted to refund and the parameters order that you established is presented for you on this particular page here. And we've got the parameter, then the actual results of the general obligation bond refunding and the water and wastewater refunding. The most important part of this, I've highlighted there with the yellow dotted box around, and that's the minimum savings threshold. You established a threshold of 2% net present value savings for us to effectuate those transactions and we were able to achieve that by a pretty nice margin. The GO actually came in at 3.071% and the water and wastewater came in at 4.031%. The other thing that I'm going to get into in a little bit was, we, we talk about your ratings and, and all it really says from a parameter standpoint is that the bonds must be rated by nationally rated, nationally recognized rating agency service, and we did that. But with some nice fanfare around an upgrade that you received on your water and wastewater project. So, not only did we exceed the, the minimum threshold for savings, but we got some good news we're going to talk about in a little bit from the standpoint of your ratings. I'll talk first about the results from the general obligation bond. It's up on the screen now and I want to hit one, a couple of metrics here that I think are very important. And the first really drives the results of this transaction. So, if you're, if you'll look at the lower left-hand corner of this page, we've got a summary of the refunding results. And you'll note that four lines down in that table, it says average coupon of the refunding bonds. In this particular case, this was made up of four separate series of obligations from your GO lien that totaled about 47.63 million. The average coupon rate was 4.151%. So, think of that as the existing rate on a combined basis of each of those four, of the combined four series of bonds. We refinance those with the new obligations in the next line, true interest cost of 3.181%. So, there's the differential in the interest rate that drives the savings in the transaction. So, if you then go down to the, once again, the yellow dotted box at the bottom, the net present value savings ended up being 1.462 million and that drives the metric I spoke of on the previous page of 3.071%. So, a very nice result. If, if you want to get away from present value dollars and just look at gross dollars, you can see the table to the right in the bottom right-hand corner, it's 1.4, I'm sorry, 1.649 million in gross debt, debt service savings dollars over the life of those four series of obligations that you refunded. The next page focuses on, again, you know, same layout here, but on the water and wastewater refunding that we effectuated for you. Three series of obligations that total 60.615 million. I'll highlight the same metrics in the lower left-hand corner, the first being the average coupon of the refunding bonds being 4.269% refunded at a true interest cost of 3.232%. So, again, almost a full percentage point lower, or just over a full percentage point lower. And that drives the tidy metrics at the bottom of 2.43 million on a net present value basis. And again, if you want to look at that on a gross basis, that's $2.8 million in debt service dollars that you will not be paying because you've refinanced at a lower rate of interest. So, that's the numerical portion of the analysis or the, the results that we'll go through. Went too far. What I did want to spend some time on was your credit profile for two reasons. One, there's a lot of stuff that, that you can do to get a lower cost of borrowing in the marketplace. One is to time the market better, but that's really hard to do. Nobody ever knows where that's headed. You can have shorter debt service structures, but sometimes you need to match that off with the useful life of the asset you're financing. So, that's really hard to do. There's things you can do structurally and, you know, financially that will help a little bit, but nothing near as great as your credit profile. Just like a consumer might go into a bank and try to borrow money, they're going to want to know everything about that consumer. And so, when you hire these nationally recognized rating agencies, it's their job to know everything about you from the city council, policy, practice, procedure, to your administration, implementation of policy, their practices, their procedures, and then on down to the financial metrics that back up the city of Lubbock. And so, think of things like your taxable assessed valuation, your water and sewer models, things that you've worked hard on with your administration, your policy has driven into their practice. And so, they really do, really do a very, very deep dive on that. And so, you had the, the circumstance here of looking at just both sides of this, the general obligations of tax-backed issuance and then your water and sewer bonds, which are driven by a collection of water and sewer revenues for repayment of those obligations. Your two GO ratings came in by S&amp;P at Fitch at AA+. So, that is just one notch away from AAA, which is perfect in their world. Very difficult to get to the AAA. I would argue that sometimes it's cost prohibitive because you have to have reserve policies and other things that might not be as flexible as you would like for them to be. The water and sewer, you actually had an affirmation of your S&amp;P rating of AA, but Fitch upgraded your rating to AA+. And so, let me stop there and remind you that when Mr. Atkinson arrived at the city, we undertook the practice of getting away from issuing tax-backed bonds for revenue-generating projects like water, wastewater. And we pushed those over into its own separate water and sewer revenue lien for a couple reasons. One of which was, we wanted to develop a better credit profile for that enterprise system. We also wanted to unencumber some of the capacity that you had from your general obligation lien. And we really wanted to see that system flourish on its own through your new rate model and some of the things that you all were doing there. And so, this is proof positive that that has worked and it's worked quite well. There are very few systems that have the same GO rating and water and sewer rating, are usually at least a notch, if not two, apart, which has been consistent here at Lubbock. Now, Fitch has you at AA+, AA+ for GO and water, wastewater. So, hats off to you for that. We've got some commentary in the bullets below. I won't read every single one of these, but a lot of it in my mind comes down to growth and policy. The growth being incredibly vibrant local economy growth, taxable assessed valuation growth, coupled with robust financial policies and practices that support a stable financial profile with strong reserves. Policy implemented by your administration. And then in the water and sewer part of it, you'll see that there is a strong rating affirmation that's supported by your conservatism and forward-looking planning. And I spoke earlier about your rate model and some of the things you did to create this lien, separate things out, and those are all policy issues that I think have worked out quite well for you. And again, we don't have many clients and don't see many clients that have the same water and sewer profile as your general obligation profile. And you've got some more information in here. I won't read every word of that, but I wanted you all to hear that from me because that's where we spend a tremendous amount of our time. And I want to tip my cap to Mr. Atkinson, Amber, everyone, Cheryl, everyone that was involved in the process of going through this exhaustive review. It's not simple. They ask a lot of questions. They need a lot of data. They need follow-up. They do a fantastic job of getting them everything they need and I think it's something you can be proud of and the citizens of the city of Lubbock can know that their, people are doing what they say that they'll do and they've delivered on their promises. So, I wanted to open it up now for any questions you might have, either financially or credit rating that I can answer.
Thank you, Matt. And we know when we need information, Cheryl can get it to us real quick. She can turn it around faster than anybody I know, just about.
Sometimes it's too fast.
Were you just waiting for me to ask that question? Yeah. The reason I kind of wanted this presentation today, and thank you for that presentation. You use, you use the word refunding a lot and most people out there would probably use the word refinancing, but it's a technical term, but it means the same thing. We are refinancing a debt at a new interest rate, a lower interest rate and achieving the savings by doing so. And the way we were able to do that, and we're not extending the timeframe for the debt, the same timeframe, just a lower interest rate, which accrues a savings to us over that time period. And we're able to achieve that, large part because our ratings are so strong. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so, that's why I want the public to hear that. We do have a lot of people who question our city's debt load and it's, of course, a fair question to always ask about how much debt our carries, our city carries. But these are the professional groups that rate your city's credit worthiness and Standard and Poor and Fitch. And they've looked at our city and given us almost the highest rating that can be given. And as you said, there's just one more notch you could achieve and it may be a step we would not want to take or may not be able to take. I mean, our demographics, you know, externals do determine some things, things we cannot do as a council or as a city, they're just the reality of the city that we have and our tax base and everything like that. So, I think we've gotten about as far as we can due to the good work of our, our city management and that, and our finance team here. But I just want our citizens to hear that. Don't look at just the raw numbers of our debt, but look at what we have bought and achieved with our debt. And, you know, every city stands on its own terms as to what they need. And a lot of our debt is committed to our water, to achieving water sustainability for our city. A large part of it is LPNL debt that other cities don't have. So, it's, it's easy to compare us against other cities, but the real comparison is what these professional agencies do in comparing our debt load and our ability to pay it. And they've rated us about as high as they can. So, I, I hope our citizens do understand that and that can answer some of the questions, maybe not all of them. And, and all the questions are fair to ask, but I just want people to know that our city is really in good, good hands as far as our debt is concerned. Any questions? All right. If there are none, thank you very much, Matt. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. We'll take up item 7.2 now. I'm going to call on our city manager to provide a briefing on this item.
While we're wrestling with our technology there, we're going to have Ms. Brock and Mr. Bowles back again. Mayor and council, as they're getting set up, just a quick reminder, this is the New Year's issuance for water and wastewater. You see the projects listed. Matt will go over them again here in just a moment, but just a quick reminder, these are all approved in your current operating budget. So, these were reviewed in great detail back in August and September. Now, we're moving to the implementation phase of that. And I didn't chew up quite enough time and I'm out of jokes for today. So, I'll stop back off at the engineering floor and get their jokes. All right. Matt, please.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm back. And this time, I'm armed with Jerry Kyle of Oric is in your audience and is your bond council and is happy to answer any questions that might come up that are legal in nature. And that's what this ultimately boils down to because we're going to ask you to consider an ordinance that establishes certain parameters that if met, can effectuate the financing of the projects that we're going to talk about right now. And so, on this first page, you have six projects that I will go through in just a little bit that will be financed, if you so choose, by your water and wastewater system revenue bond, Series 2025, in early 2025. I've got a calendar I'll go through here in just a little bit. These include five projects plus the land acquisition for Lake Number Seven. The maximum maturity on these bonds will be 20 years with a 10-year par-call option and that's consistent with how you have operated in the past with other series of obligations. These will be rated by S&amp;P and Fitch. And to my earlier remarks, you will enjoy the affirmation of Fitch's AA rating and the upgraded rating by Fitch of AA+. The numbers that we ran in here include current market rates plus a cushion of 50 basis points and I do that for a couple of reasons. One, we've got some time yet that will elapse before we sell the obligations and I don't quite know exactly where the market's going to go, although I'm, I'm very bullish on where the market is from a debt standpoint right now. And then number two, we are undertaking with Jerry Kyle and his staff an analysis on a portion of the lake project that might be considered private use and necessitate either a cash contribution from the city, which could be as much as $4 million, or the issuance of taxable of taxable securities. I think we're leaning more towards the contribution of cash that you all have on hand to support that, but I did want to leave some cushion in there so that I don't give you numbers that are not workable in a month's time. These will be issued so that they're delivered in the middle of February, and you'll make your first payment in 2026, in the month of February. The projects are at the bottom of the page, the first of which, and the second largest, is the Lake Seven Design and Land Acquisition for 22.276 million. And then five other project, projects, the West Lubbock Water System Expansion, Pump Station 11B, East 50th Street Water Line Extension, the Southwest Lubbock Sanitary Sewer Expansion, and then the Plant Number Four for Primary Clarification Rehab. And so if you have any questions about those projects, we can stop there and discuss those with Mr. Atkinson. The parameters that will be established per the ordinance are laid out for you in front of here, and there's nothing awfully magical about this, consistent with what you did on your refunding parameters. You'll establish the price of the bonds, the maximum interest rate, the maximum maturity, maximum principal, and then the ratings, just like you did on the refunding obligations. On a very preliminary basis, we went ahead and ran some numbers so that you could get a sense of what the cost of funding would be around this initiative. In the center portion of this page, you have the summary statistics, and I've highlighted for you the all-in true interest cost, 4.41%. Take that 50 basis points out, and you're in the 3% money range, roughly 390, 395, somewhere in that area, I would guess, when it's all over. And then in the right-hand side of the page, the actual debt service, and I do want to reiterate, these are 20-year obligations. This is consistent with the useful life of these projects. In some cases, the useful life of these projects will far exceed this amortization, so it's in keeping with good, sound, fundamental financial practices. And then the finally pa- final page, and I recognize this is, is pretty small, is, is the timetable here. We've highlighted for you in gray the boxes or the action items that are really most important and the key dates, not the least of which is today, to get you to consider this parameter ordinance. We'll have some diligence calls in early January and look to price these obligations in the mid-portion of January, closing, as I said earlier, in the middle of February, on or about the 13th of February. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I can answer questions.
See, you want to have any questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Bowles.
Thank you.
With that, I will entertain a motion to approve item 7.2.
One more.
Or a second. Any discussion? I see none. All in favor, please let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. I hear none. It passes unanimously. All right, let's move on to item 7.3, and again, Mr. Atkinson, if you'll provide a briefing on this item.
Thank you, Mayor, and with the issues I think we're having with technology, would you mind switching the inputs on your monitor, and I'll try to do this one from up here? That was almost magic. Thank you. Okay, council, we've had several discussions. Remember that the looming deadline related to ARPA, or the American Rescue Plan Act, the looming deadline is December 31 of this year, 2024. That deadline says that we have to have all of our ARPA funds committed by that date. We have to have them expended by December 31 of 2026, but we've got to satisfy the first one to get to the second one. The item we have before you is a requested budget amendment. This is the first read. We'll do a second read next week that sets us up to meet all of those requirements. So list on the page, obviously, the red numbers are where we are reducing the allocation to a project, and then the black numbers will be where we're taking the dollars to. So just real quick, the dollars that were approved for cybersecurity, those projects are all in, all done. This is the remainder. We're pulling it out. The job training program we have, which actually funds a number of the things we do at the city, this is the estimated amount that we will not be able to spend by the December 2026 deadline, so pull it back in hand. Public safety improvements, this is balancing an overspend. It's not removing anything that we've done. It's, it's an adjustment. The employee assistance program, that is our educational program that we have, based on the current track of expenditure or of uptake, this is the amount that won't be used by that deadline. The park walking trails, you've recently approved that on a contractual basis. It came in substantially below the budgets for that, so we're pulling those dollars. The cattail removal and dredging program, it's, they're not going to be able to do the dredging. We're leaving dollars in to finish year two and year three of killing off the cattails, and then the other dollars are going to come back out. The May Simmons Parking Lot and Lake Six restroom, that's done. That's the remainder there. The Parks Aquatic Facilities, that's what was left out of the splash pads. Locate and Repair Water Valves, that was a project that we had funded early on, primarily in North and in East Lubbock. These are the dollars unspent out of that program. We got almost all of it spent. And then the next is the number we've talked about, but we've never actually been able to give you the value of it. That is the accrued interest. So as we have held these dollars, we take the interest money, pull it aside, you're sitting at about 1.25 million in that, where we would like to take all of these, these dollars. First, we do have a need to take about 61,000 to finish out one of the restroom projects. Note that the parks projects in general, we're being able to take significantly more of that. We're recapturing, but we need to knock this one out, and this is the one we had to elevate it because of the floodplain, so we've got ADA compliance. That then leaves you with 4.038 million. You add all of these up, minus the 61,000, it's $4 million. This is the dollars that Mr. Bowles referenced that we can apply to the Lake Seven project directly. Since that land transaction will close on or before February the 15th of next year, 2025, that gets us totally out from under any potential concerns that we have with being able to use all of your ARPA dollars for the benefit of Lubbock. So all in, you see where we've started and where we've ended with these remaining funds. We ask you to reduce those in red by those amounts and apply them, 61,000 to the restroom project and 4.038 million to the Lake Seven project. And that is the first read of the budget ordinance that's in front of you. Take any questions you may have.
Are there any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I think, I think we might have skipped over to 7.4, which is completely okay. Let's just understand that we're going to vote on 7.4 on this one, and then we'll go back and do 7.3.
I was so excited to talk about ARPA since I was out of jokes.
All right, we want to do them both together. Is that what you're saying?
No, we, he just briefed you on 7.4, so you can go ahead and have your discussion on 7.4.
On 7.4, just move.
Vote on 7.4.
Come back to 7.3.
My opinion, back to 7.3.
All right, all right. Are there any questions? And just again, for the, I guess, folks who might be watching this and have a question about this, even though we found these $4 million that were not expended of our ARPA funds, we're not free to spend those on just anything. We can't put them into our general fund budget at all. We have to spend them on approved ARPA projects, and these two projects that we're doing here, the 61,000 and then the 4 million for our lakes, are approved projects that we can use them for.
Excellent point, Mayor, and that, that is correct. ARPA has very unique definitions as to where you spend the dollars. There were some changes to how we have to spend those dollars that were made in late July of this year. This, in our opinion, keeps you firmly within ARPA and also means we're going to get the benefit of those dollars. I don't want another rule change coming in on us.
All right. And this allows us to expend out all that money, so we don't have any, I think, we're trying to avoid any issues with not completing expenditures within the timeframe that ARPA allows us. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, just so everybody understands why we are doing this and how we are doing this. All right, any other questions? All right, I will take a motion to approve item 7.4.
One more.
A second?
Second.
All, any discussion? Any further discussion? I see none. All in favor, please let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. I hear none. That passes unanimously. Let's go back to 7.3 now. Mr. Atkinson?
I'll do a better job of talking about 7.3 on item 7.3. Item 7.3, Mayor, City Council, this is your budget amendment, first reading that establishes the 2024 approved street bond projects. You'll have a second reading next Tuesday, a reimbursement resolution, and then the entire schedule that Mr. Turpin presented will take off and run.
All right, and I will entertain a motion on item 7.3. A motion, a second?
One more.
Any discussion on item 7.3? I see none. Please vote. All in favor, please let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. I hear none. It passes unanimously. All right. Now we'll move on to item 7.4. And this time, I'm going to call on our city attorney, 7.5. I can read that. That's a fire right there. I'll call on our city attorney, Matt Wade, to provide the briefing on this item. Dr. Wilson, when your eyes get as old as mine, you might miss some of those numbers. Okay, all right.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On November the 7th, 2024, the city secretary received a petition from the Lubbock Professional Police Association asking that they be considered the sole and exclusive bargaining organization for meet and confer under Chapter 142 of the Texas Local Government Code. They received, the petition was confirmed by the Human Resources Department, and they received 81.9% approval of the eligible police officers within the Lubbock Police Department asking for that to be done. By statute, the city council has basically three options at this point. We are required, within 30 days, we're receiving a petition of either go ahead and certifying the Lubbock Professional Police Association as the sole and exclusive bargaining agent for the Lubbock Police Officers. You can also ask for a certification election, or you can also ask for a general election of the public. The resolution, the recommendation that's before you is to go ahead and recognize Lubbock Professional Police Association as a sole and exclusive bargaining agent for meet and confer purposes with the Lubbock Police Department.
All right, any questions for Mr. Wade? All right, I will entertain a motion at this time to approve item 7.5.
One more.
Motion, a second made. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. I hear none. That motion passes unanimously. I will move on to item 7.6. Mr. Wade?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. This is almost identical to what you just previously approved. We received a petition on November 25th from the Lubbock Professional Firefighters Association asking that they be considered the sole and exclusive organization for bargaining purposes for meet and confer, a meet and confer agreement. It was received, like I said, it was received on November 25th with a 76.8% approval, which was confirmed by the Human Resources Department. Same three options for the city council at this time. You can either go ahead and certify them as a sole and exclusive bargaining association, or you can ask for a certification election or a general election. The resolution that's before you and the recommendation of staff is to go ahead and recognize the Lubbock Professional Firefighters Association as the sole and exclusive bargaining association with the city of Lubbock.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. Any questions for Mr. Wade? If there are none, I will entertain a motion to approve item 7.6.
One more.
All right, any discussion? I see none. All in favor, please let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. I hear none. Passes unanimously. We want to item 7.7, consider an appointment of a chairperson of the Central Business District Tax Increment Financing Reinvestment Zone Board of Directors for the 2025 calendar year. I'm now going to call on our city secretary to provide the staff briefing on this issue.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the, according to state law, you all appoint the chair of each of your TIF boards. For the Central Business District TIF, currently Dan Williams serves as your chair. Staff is recommending that Mr. Williams continue serving as chair, and he has agreed to continue serving should you all appoint him, and this would be for the calendar year of 2025.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Paz? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointment of the chair of this board, Mr. Dan Williams.
One more.
Any discussion? I see none. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. I hear none. It passes unanimously. Now, item 7.7, Ms. Paz?
Yes, 7.8. This is the appointment of the Lubbock Business Park TIF Board Chair. Currently, Ms. Sandy Henry is serving as chair. Staff does recommend she continue service chair, and she has agreed also to continue serving should you all appoint her.
Any questions for Ms. Paz? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
One more.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I see none. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. I hear none. That motion passes unanimously. Item 7.9, consider appointment of a chairperson for the No- North Overton Tax Increment Financing Reinvestment Zone Board of Directors for the 2025 calendar year. Ms. Paz?
Thank you, Mayor. For this board, currently Jeff Dane serves as your chair, and staff is recommending Mr. Dane continue serving as chair, and Mr. Dane has agreed to continue, continue serving if appointed.
Any questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
One more.
Any discussion? I see none. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. I hear none. It passes unanimously. All right. Now we're going to conduct a hearing, a public hearing regarding the city of Lubbock's intent to annex an area of land consisting of approximately 374.74 acres of real property, commonly known as the Highland Oaks subdivision, located within an area located south of 146th Street, which is Farm to Market Road 7500, east of Frankfurt Avenue, north of Woodrow Road, Farm to Market 7600, and west of Slide Road, Farm to Market Road 1730, into Lubbock's corporate limits. As a reminder to everyone, the purpose of this public hearing is to hear from the applicant and members of the public. The council may ask questions of the applicant or staff during the public hearing, but no discussion on the merits will be conducted by the council during the public hearing. So now I'm going to call on Kristin Sager to provide a brief summary of this agenda item subject to the public hearing.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. As you stated, this is the first post-election public hearing for the Highland Oaks subdivision. The election was November 5th, and the vote to annex this area passed by the residents by 69.3%. After today's public hearing, you'll have an additional public hearing, January 14th, and then council will have the opportunity to take action on the ordinance to actually annex the property, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Ms. Sager? Thank you, Ms. Sager. I'm now going to open the public hearing on agenda item 7.10. Is there anyone wishing to speak on the city of Lubbock's intent to annex this area, commonly known as the Highland Oaks subdivision? If so, would you please come forward, state your name and your address, and speak to the matter.
Shannon Hanson, 5502 County Road 7560, here in Lubbock. And first, just want to thank you all for all of y'all's help with everything, and see if you have any questions for us.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? All right, anyone else? Thank you. Anyone else wish to come forward and speak to this item on our agenda? Anyone else? I see none, so I will close this public hearing at 4:12 PM. All right, now, without objection, the council will conduct a consolidated public hearing on a series of zoning cases. The council's already received in their packets the staff reports from the Planning Department and the recommendations from the Planning and Zoning Commission. And just as before, the purpose of the public hearing is to hear from the applicant and members of the public. We may ask questions of the applicant or staff during the public hearing, but no discussion on the merits will be conducted by the council during this public hearing. So I now call on Ms. Sager again to provide a brief summary of each of the agenda items, 7.11 through 7.14.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 7.11 is Zone Case 3257Q. Item seven point eleven is zone case thirty-two fifty-seven Q, a request of AMD Engineering for fifteen eighty-five development, a request to rezone property from low-density, single-family SF-two to medium-density residential. We sent out seventy-two notifications, receiving twenty-two in opposition, seven of which are from outside the notification boundary. This property is located north of one hundred and thirty-seventh, west of Elgin Avenue. This is the map showing the responses we did receive in opposition within the two-hundred and four-hundred-foot notification boundaries. Here's an aerial view of the subject property, is currently vacant. There are developed, single-family homes to the east and an apartment complex to the west. Current zoning is low-density, single-family SF-two. There is high-density residential to the west, a mix of auto-urban commercial, SF-two, and medium-density residential to the north, with additional, single-family to the east and south. Future land use plan designates this property for low-density residential land uses. And here's some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. Here's a site plan provided by the applicant showing the proposed layout of a new apartment complex, should this zone change be approved. And here's some graphics provided by the applicant showing what this apartment complex would look like. The future land use map designation for this area is residential low-density, so while this request is a minor deviation from this designation, it is appropriate in this location. The request is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and compatible with the surrounding area. It is along one hundred and thirty-seventh Street and Elgin Avenue, which are designated as collector streets. Staff recommended approval of this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with a unanimous vote, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? I see none. Okay, thank you, move on.
Item seven twelve, zone case thirty-five eleven. The request, the applicant is AMD Engineering, and the request is to rezone property from low-density, single-family SF-two to heavy commercial. We sent out seventeen notifications, receiving three in favor. This is the response map showing the three we received in favor. This property is located south of one hundred and sixteenth Street, east of Indiana Avenue. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. The property immediately to the east is outside city limits, and there is other vacant land and commercial uses surrounding. Current zoning is SF-two. It is surrounded by other heavy commercial, neighborhood commercial, and some additional SF-two zoning. The future land use plan designates this property for residential low-density. And here's some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. The future land use map designation for residential low-density is not consistent with the request. However, the request is appropriate in the location, given the existing zoning and other uses. The zone changes in conformance with the zoning ordinance and compatible with the surrounding area. One hundred and sixteenth Street is designated as a local street by the Master Therapower Plan. Staff recommended approval of this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with a unanimous vote, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? All right, thank you, move on to seven point one three.
Seven point one three is zone case thirty-five ten. The applicant is Danny J. Everson. Request to rezone property from low-density, single-family SF-two to neighborhood commercial. We sent out sixteen notifications, receiving one in opposition. This property is located at sixty-sixth and Wausau. Here's the response map showing the one in opposition, immediately to the west. An aerial view of the subject property. There is a mix of uses in this area, both commercial and residential, and you can see there are three properties that are outside city limits. The current zoning is single-family SF-two. There is additional SF-two with some light industrial to the southwest and high-density and medium-density residential to the northeast. Future land use plan designation is for low-density, single-family. And here are some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. The future land use map designation for residential low-density is not consistent with the request. However, this request is appropriate, as it would serve as a buffer between the existing single-family homes and Wausau Avenue. The proposed zone changes in conformance with the zoning ordinance and compatible with the surrounding area. Sixty-sixth Street is designated as a principal arterial in this location, and Wausau is a future collector by the Master Therapower Plan. Staff recommended approval of this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial of the request by a vote of two to six. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Dr. Wilson?
Is there a plan on what's supposed to go right here, from the building?
The current owner, I believe, is just getting it ready to sell to a future developer.
Okay. Why did P&amp;Z deny this? Did they talk, what was the conversation?
There were two or three neighbors that came and spoke in opposition at the meeting. They would prefer to see it remain residential. Had they had concerns about having commercial immediately adjacent to them, having potentially multiple driveways onto Wausau Avenue, depending on how the property got subdivided. They really just wanted it to remain residential.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, put in.
The denial, I know that the residents, that was some of the issue, but was there anything else of concern? Because isn't there already some development happening in that area?
There is. Specifically, it's hard to see, it's at the edge of this map. That light industrial park is starting to be developed. There's another business park, even though it's zoned SF-two, immediately east of that light industrial park. It began development outside city limits, so it's allowed to continue developing as a business park. So there is actually quite a bit of commercial development in this area.
Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
Hi, Kristin. In your aerial photograph, what is that structure just above?
I believe it may be a friendship school, Friendship Middle School.
Friendship Middle School?
Correct, that's one of the three new friendship schools that are in this area.
And Wausau, you say, is a, is a arterial or a collector?
It's a collector. And while sixty-six is normally a collector in other parts of the city, in this area, the Master Therapower Plan designates it as an arterial.
Okay, thank you.
And would you go back to the map showing the people who were opposed to it? Where were they located? Okay.
So we only received one written opposition, even though we had additional speakers at P&amp;Z.
All right. And they live just immediately to the west of it, is that correct? All right. And then the area right to the west of that is out of the city limits. These people are in the city limits, obviously.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Dr. Wilson?
Real quick, Ms. Sager, they're, they're asking to go to Neighborhood Commercial District. Will you remind me, since we don't know a future plan, what all could be considered Neighborhood Commercial?
That is our most restrictive commercial district. And so it mainly focuses on retail, you know, restaurants, small-business shop type uses. You're not going to have automotive uses, you're not going to have warehousing, heavy commercial, anything like that. It's more retail shopping, restaurant.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, let's move on to seven point one four then.
Seven point one four is zone case thirty-two zero seven A. The applicant is Hugo Reed and Associates for West End Hotels. The request is to rezone property from SF-two and heavy commercial to heavy commercial. We sent out nine notifications, receiving one in favor. This property is at twenty-ninth and Iola. This is the response map showing the one in favor, immediately to the north. And this is an aerial view of the subject property. This is somewhat of a cleanup case. This is the existing Aloft Hotel that has been developed. This is at the west side of the West End Shopping Center Development, at the West Loop and Thirty-fourth Street. Current zoning is heavy commercial and SF-two, surrounded by heavy commercial, auto-urban commercial, and high-density residential. Future land use plan designates this property for commercial. And some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. This is a survey provided by the applicant. The future land use map designation is for commercial land uses, so the request for heavy commercial is consistent. The request is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and the surrounding area, is at the intersection of twenty-ninth and Iola, and Iola is designated as a collector. Staff recommended approval of this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with a unanimous vote. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Mayor, put in.
This is just a cleanup, right?
Yes.
And that's it? They're not going to put anything on there, anything?
The hotel is already in existence. This is just to clean up the portion of the west property that somehow remained SF-two.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we're going to separate this into two. We'll vote on our, we'll have, entertain a motion on seven one, one, seven one two, and seven one four. Yes. Oh, yeah. Thank you very much. Going right ahead. So I'm going to now open the public hearing on items seven point eleven through seven point one four, and anyone here wishing to speak to either of these items? Either in opposition? Or in favor? I see none, so I'll now close the public hearing at four twenty-four P.M. So now, we are going to separate these into two votes, one on seven eleven, twelve, and fourteen, which came out of our Planning and Zoning with their approval. So I would entertain a motion. Second? Any discussion? All right. All in favor, please let it be known by saying aye. Aye, any opposed say nay. I hear none, that passes unanimously. So now we'll entertain a motion on agenda item seven point one three. Do I have a motion? Is there a second? All right, any discussion?
If, if I could ask-
Mr. Wade, yes.
If I could ask what the motion is for?
Yes. The motion to approve?
Okay.
Mr. Collins, was your second, is a motion to approve? Okay. All right. Now discussion. Dr. Wilson?
Yeah, Ms. Sager, can you go back and pull the map up? The, the one that is the actual aerial with the school? Yep. That one. So, knowing this area quite well, I do have some concerns with bringing in commercial. For one, with zoning the lots, that, that's a very narrow piece of property. How that would be divided up for commercial use, and I really, this is already an area that has been discussed quite a bit for traffic concerns. Wausau is one of the main entrances for Alcoa Trails, and what you don't see right over here is, there's also the new elementary. It's just a little bit more to the north. And they have a pretty significant traffic problem out, out there currently. We are trying to address a lot of that by widening upland. We are trying to address that by the plan to widen and fix drainage on sixty-six. My worry is, is the way this property is sat, with, with the length of it and the narrowness of it, that it would appear that all driveways, so ingress and egress, is going to come out onto Wausau. And that is a major thoroughfare for the pickup of that school. And so I do have some concerns with traffic on this, and not knowing what could potentially go there and how it's going to be broken up, right now, I, I think I'm, I can't be in favor of this project, just moving forward without knowing how that would work with traffic out there currently.
Mayor, put in.
And just as a reminder, P&amp;Z did deny this, and it was two to six against?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all I need to know.
Mr. Collins?
Is, is Wausau the City of Lubbock-owned thoroughfare?
Yes.
And it is currently two-lane strip paving, or is it three-lane curb and gutter?
I have it in the packet, I don't know it off the top of my head. I think it's two.
There appears to be a great deal of undeveloped land surrounding Wausau on both sides. I understand the argument to know what's being planned, but at some point, I think it's, it's challenging to deny the zone change, if you don't, I mean, look at how much vacant land we have to deal with there on Wausau. So, I mean, at some point, the improvement in development of Wausau is inevitable. We're going to have to move forward with dealing with this traffic that's going to occur in these other locations. So, I mean, it may be that we postpone this until we get a plan, or, or we can, I'm, I'm struggling with, with how to tell a landowner he can't use his property. Is, is where I am at the moment, so, thank you.
Mr. Gashin?
I think that neighborhood commercial is a very appropriate zoning for this tract. It's the most restrictive commercial use, and so you're going to see very low-intensity commercial development there. And the, the orientation of the land, I think, also lends itself to that, that you're probably going to see, you know, small shops, coffee shops, things like that. And I think that type of low-intensity neighborhood commercial, especially being close to a school and other thoroughfares, really enhances the entire experience of the neighborhood. And some of our best neighborhoods in Lubbock benefit from that mix of light commercial residential schools, and creates centers, centers of activity in the neighborhood. So I, I find the, the land use is very appropriate.
Mayor, put in.
I just want to point out one more time, and I think Dr. Wilson said it, but there is a school there, and those, I mean, that congestion around that school, when it's pick-up and drop-off, or drop-off and pick-up, whatever, and then those blocks are not, I mean, they're, I don't, I think that it's, I agree that there is future development, but I don't think it's yet. Until we work on this street, I just think it's going to be a problem. So I am with P&amp;Z and with Dr. Wilson.
Dr. Wilson?
Yeah, really quick, I just want to clarify, like, as Councilman Gashin has said, I'm actually very pro-small shop, even near schools, and, and kind of having that mixed use in areas and neighborhoods. It, having that the city has no intention, as of right now, to widen or do anything with Wausau, it's going to remain what looks like a residential road. And I think that's my biggest concern, is not the blending of, you know, small shops and restaurants near this neighborhood or the school, because I think those are always great, and I'm very pro-growth. It's more that there is no plan to make Wausau a three-lane with a turn lane. And when you drive right here, even though some of these very pieced together inside the city limits, outside the limits, property, some of these are just, they look like little farms. So there's not a lot of commercial true development on this side of the road. There is on the south side, but not on the north side. Most of it looks like it is built to be housing around this school. And so knowing that we have no plans right now, with everything we're doing, bonding of roads, and all the things that we have done in the next seven to ten years at all to widen or make this road have the ability to maintain that higher traffic with commercial, that's why I'm against it, not because I'm actually against any commercial right here and in, in that designation specifically. I just, I do worry about the, the road, because it is a very residential-looking road right now.
Mr. Rose?
I'm sorry, you probably already said this. What was the future designation for this road?
So the future land use map does, oh, the future designation, it's a collector.
Collector?
Yes.
And you may not know the answer to this question, but is, does Fifty-eighth Street run through there as a, I know in parts of town, it's more of a, what'd you call it, a collector street?
Correct, yes.
Does Fifty-eighth run through there as a collector street as well?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, it, it runs by the elementary school. And this is a junior high school, do we see? This is a middle school? Yeah, okay, excuse me. Not, not junior highs anymore. Middle school, all right. Okay. I, I kind of understand where Mr. Gashin is coming from, because I live in a neighborhood, you know, with a nice little commercial development right next to an elementary school on a, a street that's not a collector. And it seems to service that area quite well. I understand some concerns, but I've, my experience has, it's been a very good thing for that particular neighborhood. So, any other questions? All right. So now, I will entertain a motion on item seven. We have a motion, we have a motion, excuse me, we already have it. We, any more discussion? All right. If none, I will call for the vote. All in favor of approving Item 7.13, please let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Please, if you're opposed, let it be known by saying nay.
Nay.
Okay. Somebody count those votes, because I was trying to look both ways. Let's do it by hands, okay? All in favor of approval of Item 7.13, please let it be known by raising your hands. All opposed, please let it be known by raising your hands now. Okay. That motion fails. Four, two, three. All right. Now, moving on to Item 7.15. And we'll call on our seven point, no, we've already passed 7.14. This time I'm right. We'll take up Item 7.15. I'm going to call on our city manager to provide a briefing on this item.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. My briefing shall be brief. The item before you is a resolution to procure our lobbying consultant services. You have in your backup the results of an RFP that was conducted. It was graded by three staff members. The staff recommendation is for Blackridge of Austin, Texas. And then you see your second respondent coming in, just really one point less, and then a third respondent that was quite a distance away. Be glad to take any questions you may have.
Mayor Protim.
Thank you. I, as I was looking through the package, I found some issues with the point system. And on the information that I read on, it was 12, 3, 20, 24, 6, 30. It said qualifications and experience 30 percent, rates and expenses 30 percent, methodology 25 percent, and references 15 percent. That was a scale that I saw, but then I found another scale, and it said all the same, but 30, 30, 30, and 10. And that was on the RFP page. And it doesn't have a page, but you're more than welcome to look at it. So I guess my issue is, we had two different rating or criteria and rank, sorry. Can I show you?
Please do. Yeah, let me grab that real quick.
I guess is your question, is there an explanation for the change in the scoring?
Yes. That's, those questions, I want to know why that happened. How did we have two different rating systems? And then I noticed that the top two, there was about a point difference. So if I'm looking at the two different evaluations, and based on the model that was presented, that would be, I mean, it's hard for me to understand, it might be a disadvantage to the second consideration, or the second RFP proposal. So I just wanted to make sure, and I'm sorry, the second one was Hans Scarborough LLP. Did we rate them on the 30, 30, 30, 10, or did we rate them as presented, the 30, 30, 25, 15?
Yeah. That is an excellent question, and one that I do not have the answer to at the moment. So, Mayor, could we take just a very brief recess?
Yes.
Thank you.
We're now in recess for five minutes? Ten minutes? It's back from recess? All right. I believe we have an explanation, and it's not an uncommon explanation, a typo. Is that correct?
Thank you, Mayor. And I guess first, you have an apology. My apologies for the confusion. The scoring was done on the scale that is written in the RFP document you have a copy of. So it was scored on the 30, 30, 30, 10. Thus, the matrix that's in the middle of your page with the numbers on it, that is correct. What is incorrect is how we listed out the scoring division in the written part of the memo. It was scored correctly, it was written up incorrectly. My apologies.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. All right. Mr. Gashin. I will now, well, is there any further discussion? Okay. I will now entertain a motion to approve Item 7.15.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Gashin.
I move to amend the resolution and attached contract for lobbying services by striking Blackridge and replacing with Hans Scarborough LLP throughout, and further replacing the exhibits included for Item 7.15 with the updated exhibits that we are distributing now at the dais.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on that item? If not, all in favor, let it be known, and we are voting on approving a amendment to the Item 7.15. Mr. Wade?
You're actually voting to do exactly what he says, so this will be the only vote?
Yes. Because we are totally replacing-
That's correct.
And so we will not take a second vote then. All right. This is your only vote. So all in favor, please let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. I hear none. It is passed. All right. With that, we have exhausted all items on our agenda, and this meeting is adjourned. Please turn off your microphones.